I want to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, let's get to the consent agenda.
Okay. Board members, you do have a consent agenda there this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000; item B, which is our MTEC affiliation agreement with WVUH, WVUSM, UHA, SMG. I can read all those initials if you want me to. Item C is our supplements and transfers. Item D, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item E are our field experiences. Item F is the Head Start COLA application. Item G is the Head Start Quality Improvement application. Item H is the Grant Solutions BOE President Name Change. Item I is our collaborative contract cancellation. And item J are the minutes of your last meeting.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Superintendent, personnel.
Okay. First of all is your original personnel list there for you this evening. I do have one correction. If you look on page three, would you please delete lines 41 through 44? That's inclusive, Mr. DeSantis, 41 through 44 inclusive. With that single deletion, superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Moving on.
Yes, next is a new position that we need board approval for. This is a therapeutic services instructor for our med ed program that you heard about at our last board meeting. It's a 200-day full-time position between MHS and UHS. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the new position as presented to you this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this something that we're going to pay for? I mean, I thought, I'm confused. Is this with the medical people that did their presentation a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
This is part of their program?
It's part of our program.
Part of our program.
In conjunction with them, yes. This is a partnership between the hospital. And you can see the funding's listed there.
Okay.
It's career technical education funding.
Right, right.
Through our Perkins grant that will pay for the position.
Okay.
So it's not coming out of county money, it's coming out of federal money.
Okay. I just need a clarification on that.
Yep, no problem. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of new position as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Thank you. Personnel listed then.
All right. I don't have any changes to the addendum, so the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented to you this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
My only comments are, we've got a lot of retirements listed on these two lists and we're going to miss a lot of these people. It's really going to be difficult. There's a lot of fabulous folks. When I see some of these instructors, especially on our first list, that have been with us for such a long time.
Hearing no more conversation, all in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Okay, superintendent, move on to our presentations.
I know Mr. Lidle had said before he wanted to start the presentations, he just kind of wanted to give a brief overview for the board of what this process looks like. Again, generally, we do this in a committee setting, but obviously because of the magnitude of the project that we're looking at, and I think rightfully so, the board requested that this be done in a full-board, public setting. And so I'll turn things over to Mr. Lidle so he can kind of give you a brief overview of what we're going to do and see and hear this evening.
The biggest reason I wanted this little bit of time was if there was any questions from the board that we would, that we've been able to answer those up front as far as how this process works. We are going to have four different presentations, as you guys know, and 40 minutes is going to be the time that we allot for them to present, and then after the presentation, to have questions from the board members. And if you guys look through your packets and you have questions specifically from the packets, we can ask those, and then also, obviously, from their presentation. The one thing I made, tried to make clear, I talked to superintendent, and he was to make it clear, and it looked like that happened, that we don't want to hear what's in it. It's like somebody giving you a book and then explaining the book. They are not, they shouldn't talk about anything that's in that book specifically, because we should know all the information in there as we've reviewed that. I have a couple of questions in each one that I'm going to ask specifically, but you could feel free to do that, and if there's clarification of anything in there, you can ask specifically of the firms when they're in here. I don't think Dan or Jen have been, have been part of this with the school system yet. I think I've done one with Mike and with Nancy, so they understand the process. So, any questions from the board about how this process will work, what we will do? It'll pretty much be their time to present, and they pretty well shape it. And then, like I said, you guys can ask questions during their presentation if you want to, and if you, but if you can, to wait till after, it's probably going to be a little bit more fluent for their presentation as they go through it. There was one confusion on the scoring sheet for me, that D added up to 35 instead of 25. And then references were 10 also at the bottom, so I don't know if anybody else caught that, but we need to, we'll just clarify that. It's all, it's still going to be equal as long as we each scored in the parentheses what was there, and we can, we can have conversation after that. So it is probably, it's going to be open discussion for the board members after these presentations, and if you guys want to have questions that you don't want to have public to hear, we can go into discussion after. So is there any questions from the board members before I turn this over to the presenters to give their presentation?
Just for clarification for the board, so the board does understand, we are not live streaming.
Sorry.
We are not live streaming the presentations for the sheer purpose that, obviously, in this setting, you don't want to create an advantage for one presenter over the other. Live stream would allow, even though we've sequestered the other groups, live stream would then give them the ability to view the other presentations. And so we didn't want to create that disadvantage for anyone. So what we are doing is Danny will continue to tape, and then at the conclusion of the meeting, we will post, as we always post the live stream, we'll post the tape version of that so that the public can see the presentations after the fact if they weren't, if they weren't here for the, for the meeting.
The decision to have this in open, I mean, besides the fact that the openness of the process is to, is to just, you know, we've got to start building public trust when we're doing something of this magnitude. And public trust begins with openness, and even if that's something that usually happens behind closed doors for smaller, smaller presentations or smaller boards. Very important part of education in the future, and I think we need to definitely have this where people can see it, and also the presenters can go back and look and see what the difference was, if there's any questions. Superintendent, with that, I have, I have nothing else to say besides this is an exciting process.
Yeah, it is, I'm excited about it. We do have a schedule there, and as you can, you can see that, the schedule was arranged in the order that we received the presentations, the submissions. So the first one that we received was the DLR group, and so they're scheduled to start at 5:30, but if there's no objections, we'll go ahead and start them, start them a little bit early. But that's the DLR group in Williamson Shriver. We said we'd give a brief five-minute break so, for transition between the two groups. We'll take a 10-minute necessary break in between 2 and 3, and another short transition there between 3 and 4, and then we'll finish things up with our last presenter. So with that said, if the board wants to start, we'll go ahead and bring our first group in.
So moved.
All right. Amanda, would you like to bring in DLR? Thank you. And Mr. President, do you want to give them any directions or?
I just want to give them time.
We told them that they have 30 minutes for the presentation, and then at least to give, to give the board at least 10 minutes for questions, unless you want to change something to that. That's what we put the schedule together for.
Give me a second. This guy's not. Thirty-minute presentation, 10 minutes for questions was kind of the, kind of the guidance. So you guys can check that if you want, but that was just kind of what we requested.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. We are so excited to be here. I would like to express how humbled we are by this opportunity to partner with Mon County to help bring this wonderful project to fruition. I'm Kwame Bailey. As a team, we felt appropriate that I kick it off, since I've been connected to this project from the beginning. This evening marks a culmination of three years of conversations, meetings, research, that all started with a single phone conversation. And if we're fortunate enough to win this project, I will be kind of your client liaison, and I'll be there every step of the way to help ensure that my team is responsive. We have a big group with us this evening. We hope that shows how serious we are and how important this project is to us. Our team is really passionate about CTE and applied learning, and particularly as it relates to student outcomes. This phenomenal team will talk to you about some of our ideas, will take you through a case study that directly relates to the process at Renaissance Academy and how that would be executed. But this isn't about us. Today is about your vision and your values, and it's certainly about the kids and igniting passions for lifelong learners. We were very intentional about our teaming partner. We spoke to a number of firms in West Virginia, and what we heard was that no one knew you better than Williamson Shriver. But certainly, we didn't just pick them, they also picked us. So I'd like to turn it over to Ted Shriver to talk about his passion and connection to this project.
Thank you, Kwame. First, I would like to thank the selection committee for inviting us to come here tonight and share with the board, convey why we feel we are the best team to successfully complete your vision like we have done so in the past. Little history about us or me that you may not know, I've been involved in Montague County schools since 2002, was involved in the bond promotion as well as all projects within the bond. I was a part of the 2020-2030 CEFP where all this began, this vision that you all have about the Renaissance Academy. So it's very encouraging, exciting to be a part of this, to be a part of your vision and that of the community. As Kwame said, it was about them selecting us and us selecting them, and I feel that goes way back a number of years because we're both members of a planning and educational community organization that's international, A4LE. We're both partners in that education. So we go way back, and to some degree, we really didn't know that, but that is a part of why we selected each other. At this point, I want to turn it over to John and talk about his passion.
Thank you, Ted. Ted, we're delighted that you, that you've agreed to work with us too. Thank you. So it is an amazing opportunity, and we are really excited to be here. Let me introduce you to our team that we have here today with us. I'm John Chadwick. I'm the person who's ultimately responsible for the project. I have 10 years' experience working for school districts in facilities and operations, and I'm also an architect working in private practice. So I'm the person that provides the bridges, operations, design, planning, and construction. Pam Loffelman is our national CTE expert. She is a huge advocate for it. She speaks all over the country, and she also has more energy than the rest of the team put together. Greg Martin is a, an expert on developing really complex sites like the one you have in West Virginia, and also in getting all of that funding from the SBA and meeting their requirements. Camilo Bearman, I've known Camilo for about 15 years now, both me, the client, him, the architect, and now as a colleague, and I know that he is totally dedicated to K-12, and he will work with you rather than for you. He was, is a real designer, he really cares about you as the client and what the needs of the kids are. Jason Shanty over there is a construction expert. You're going to hear some stories about him later. He will be involved in construction administration, but he's also going to look at the documents before they start construction, before they go out to bid, to make sure that that quality is there. And last, but not by no means least, it is Ted Shriver who will work with Pam Loffelman on the educational specifications and coordinate with the State Board of Education. DLR Group is a large firm, and we are backed up with a whole series of different experts who will touch your projects, your project at different times and in different ways. Most importantly, I think, is our high-performance design team who will work with us and you to make sure that you achieve zero energy and that we achieve that low carbon emissions that you are looking for in your project. But we're going to do more than that. We're going to take that information about the way the building is performing in relation to the climate, in relation to the environment, and we're going to present that to you as constantly updated data that will be integrated with the STEM program so that the students can use that information that they can see right there in front of them, that they're experiencing themselves for their project-based learning in the STEM programs. We've worked very carefully with Ted and his team to select West Virginia consultants who understand how to build things in West Virginia, who he and his team have worked with on many other education projects, so that we have the right team in the right place for your project. We also have some doubling up there so that we have some internal quality control between, for example, two different cost estimators, and some, also some information around geotechnical. You've asked us to give you our ideas, or to share our ideas for Renaissance Academy. So we're going to talk about how we're going to embrace design opportunities to ignite those student passions. We're going to talk about partnering with you to realize the full potential of CTCP in Mon County for your students. We're going to talk a little bit about understanding local economy and how that will add through partnerships to your programs. And then I'll talk a little bit about securing the bond, but you're already starting on that. And then Greg and Jason will talk about completing the academy on schedule, on budget, and with great quality construction. So with that, I will pass it over to Greg to talk to us about development of the site.
Thank you. Thanks, John. With the site selected near, there we go. With the site selected near Casfield, it will be centrally located between the three high schools, and will allow the Renaissance Academy to be a showcase for Montague County schools. Located between Route 7 and Route 19 overlooking Interstate 9, or I-77, the site is a large open canvas of about 135 acres, with opportunities to develop the site for future expansion for additional buildings and the growth of the program through amenities and other use for the county. Based upon the knowledge of the site that was selected, it was previously an existing mine site for operations, and it has some deep mines as well. We've had experience with these on a couple of projects here in Morgantown at University High School and Eastwood Elementary School. Unlike Eastwood Elementary School, the building was designed around the site. We have the opportunity here to design the site around the building. With the large site and the potential SBA funding, this would suggest having an early site preparation package separate from the building package. The site development package would include the earthwork to develop the building seats for the buildings. It would allow the access for the future roads for construction, and then also the utilities for extension to the site. For school and campus safety, an additional access road from Route 19 should be considered so that you have a second exit out of the site. With that, I'm going to now hand it over to Camilo to talk about the potential site and building design.
Thank you, Greg. So on the piece of paper in front of you and on the screen, there's images, which are just images of a school. We've been thinking about what a school could be, but by no means represents what we think the design should be. There's a lot of work we hope to do with you before we get to any idea of what your, what the real design is for your school and what your vision and the student experience should be. But that said, we think it's good to spark a conversation. For instance, on the site, Greg just mentioned there could be multiple points of access. We're showing an access here coming in from the bottom left, the west side, but should we consider something from Route 19? Or, for example, how do we design a school so that you can expand on it later, right? So that the design doesn't preclude or get in the way of expanding and disrupting kids who are using it? Or, how do we bring in utilities so that those utilities can branch out to future buildings and you have a CTE campus, right? So the positioning of the building starts to, starts to spark those conversations. For instance, do we rotate the building in such a way that it captures the free daylight throughout the year or the rainwater to use as building process water? So lots of opportunities. Or what's the image of your building from 79? You know, an image that really expresses your excitement about CTE, the energy that you have, all the wonderful things you're doing for the community and for the students. So talking about the outside, but what if we peek under the hood and think about what the inside might be, what the experience could be for a student? So if I'm a student and I'm showing up, I want the building to be important, I want it to be warm. It's not some CTE shed on the back of a high school, but it's, it's kind of like an ecosystem of suites and spaces that support the kind of learning I want to do. You see the gaps in between the suites that are for the different program areas. Those gaps allow in daylight, connect us back to the site. And if I'm a student, I'm arriving and I'm going to my first class, maybe it's Health Sciences on the right, that class represents a real-world scenario, right, a reception desk, and something very exciting. And how do I see into other spaces? This is advanced manufacturing, for instance. What if I'm interested in health sciences and creating a medical device that might improve the life of one of my prospective patients in health sciences, right? As we move back towards the middle of the school, we're heading into the innovation commons, or just an idea that there's a commons that's not only used for lunch and socializing and hanging out with my friends, but also presenting to my peers. Perhaps there's a career fair that happens there on my own turf, and I could grab a prospective employer to take them to my lab and show them a project, right? Another thing I think is really, could be really interesting for a student is the fact that all of the pathways, all of the passions are exposed to the commons. There's nothing hidden, and there's no passion or pathway that's not worth celebrating. As we step into architecture and construction here, Jason will tell you more about his own personal path. Obviously, we have the, the technical spaces on the inside, connected to what are so-called the dirty yards, which are often hidden, but great places to showcase learning, and these dirty yards could be connected back to that commons, right? So that kinds of learning is always on display, and the students can see what other students are doing. And if I'm a student, I'm really excited about these real-world collaboration areas, right? The screen sharing, the brainstorming rooms, the small group areas to work, and start to think about what it's like in the real world. Jason and I, we do this all the time in construction, right? We're collaborating and figuring out schedules. So there's those spaces, there's the shops, there's the classrooms on the left, right? There's the labs, all of which support this, this idea of an ecosystem of spaces, all of which support this kind of natural learning and inquiry cycle where I have an idea, I brainstorm, I collaborate with friends and colleagues, and I share that back out. So again, by no means the final design, just an idea is to start to think about student engagement, and what are some of the themes that we might talk about in envisioning your school? With that said, I'll invite Pam to talk about that visioning process.
I'm excited already. And I'm going to walk back here, even though, don't put baby in the corner. So, you know, Camilo is, I think, just an awesome partner because he leads with design, right? And so he's going to really make sure you see and feel what we're talking about, but he's also very humble in terms of he does want to design with you. So when you say, "Well, what about this? I don't like that." It's okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to really talk through a case study in Kalamazoo at Key Risa. And so at Key Risa, you know, they really thought about, well, what are their local industry partners, what is going on in that area, and just like you, they started to identify those initial pathways. You know, certainly Pfizer and Striker is a great industry partner to kind of start with, but they also partnered with local community colleges and with four-year colleges, and they've continued to grow, if you will, what those pathways are, and they've also continued to grow what those horizontal connections between the pathways can be. Because the fact of the matter is certifications are always good in terms of thinking about, maybe you're working towards getting your college degree, but you're college-oriented. Or maybe you're working towards some passion that has been ignited and that you're going to be career-oriented, or maybe you're undecided, and by being able to visit and be part of multiple pathways, you can learn what your lifelong learning should be. One of the first things that I think is really important is every client is different. So what are those core principles that you all feel are really integral to designing your building, right? And so we'll have workshops, and we'll talk about that, and we'll talk about what those implications are in terms of really thinking about that design. So when you saw that fly-through, did it make you feel that it was flexible? Did it make you feel like it was collaborative? Did it in fact start to think about those pathways and of how they could be connected in different ways? So you can see here, here's the pathways from Key Risa. You can see the little squares, the program square footage that we need to be mindful of, of staying on target with budget and schedule, right? But in fact, when you think about that fly-through, it really is about the activities and how do they interweave together. It's not a series of boxes. How transparent is transparent? How much is too much? Those are all conversations that we will work with you in a three-day charrette, right? So it will engage you, it will engage your industry partners, whoever you want to be part of this overall conversation. Students, of course, should also be sitting at the table. You can see, one of the first things we recommend is doing tours. We have an incredible kind of network of peer districts. You know, Sarah Grobel from Cherry Creek, Jeremy from Missouri Innovation Campus, now Tom up at Key Risa. These are all resources you can talk to and hear what they've done. And what it really does is it gives you ideas, sparks ideas, but it also mitigates risk, if you will, because they've already done stuff, and it's so fun to see it play forward. Workshop two is really thinking about your brand. In the case of Kalamazoo, they really latched on to the idea of they wanted a world-class facility. That was their term, and that's what they wanted. You know, they also wanted it to be You know, they also wanted it to be of Kalamazoo. I'm sure you all have lots of opinions. What is that, that essence of who you want to be and how does it fit within the overall, if you will, West Virginia landscape? There's those little building blocks. How do they start to be arranged on the site so that in fact, they once again represent your design? It's a, it's a great, you know, site, lots of topography. First workshop is you divide up, you have different tables, you're shredding with those little blocks, you're coming up with different ideas. This, as I said, was a combination of industry, students, board members, all industry partners. It actually got to be kind of fun because it was almost a competition, right? Who was going to come up with the best idea? End of day one. The next day was really spent talking about how do you improve that, right? And then all of a sudden, voila, day three, right? There was this design idea that they felt really represented who they were and what they wanted to do. You know, it's not quite that easy. There's a lot more conversations. But I think what's interesting to me is going through this process, you can actually see those, those ideas, your ideas, as they start to come to fruition within the final building. So at K Risa, the conversation around, if you will, materials, around different adjacencies, around what is the look and feel, furniture, equipment, is a continued conversation that keeps going. So I'm going to turn it over to John because as I hope you heard, industry partners are a really integral part of our planning process.
Thank you, Pam. But before we get to industry partners, I want to highlight something that Pam said earlier about peer school districts. And we've built a real network of peer school districts. They talk to one another, they learn from one another, they share ideas from one another, they share curriculum, they develop curriculum together. We really can't wait for you to be a part of that network and that network will grow over time. It's really important, it's really helpful. But let's get on to how we understand the local economy and how we find you the best partners, work with you to find the best partners we can. So this diagram here looks very similar to the one you saw for K Risa. These are in fact, the largest employers that we found in your region. And they show that you have picked very smart pathways already for your programs because they support those industries. Some of them I didn't know, T-Tech, I didn't know what they did. It's really interesting to do with STEM and technology. But how do we dive down into it a bit more so that we, it's not arbitrary, it's not just talking to the people, it's how do we do the research to get there? So we look, we have started to borrow from our community college teams that do environmental scans of the local economy to see what programs, what the needs are, what programs should be provided and even within sectors, what are the specific routes, pathways that we need. We go from quantitative analysis, we do qualitative analysis, that's workshops, learning, learning groups, learning sessions, focus groups, all of those sort of things that provide that qualitative data, that put the life into the quantitative data and give it meaning. And then we will help you come up with programs based on that. The diagram that you're looking here is actually from a community college project in Virginia. And what you're looking at in the, the green lines are the number of openings in key industries and key job types. The gray is the number of individuals and students graduating who are available to go into those. So for example, here, it's showing that there are huge opportunities for business, administration, general management. And actually, if you go all the, all the way down to the bottom, there are a lot of opportunity for licensed, practical vocational and nurse training. We're going to find out with you what really works for you and we're going to be not just looking at it now, but how can we forecast into the future as to what those needs will So that really leads us directly into securing bond approval because those partners that we find are going to be among the biggest advocates for passing that bond. This has been in the air for about three years already, so you're well on the way to embedding it in the community, to getting that buzz going, that excitement, that anticipation. Holding this meeting in public is a major step to do that because it's showing people that you're all behind it. So we are going to work with your communications department very closely to develop a comprehensive communications plan so that everybody is on point, both internally, so your teachers are talking about it, your administrators are talking about it, they have the same message. And then the same going out into the community among your, among your stakeholders. We give you a little example here from Cherry Creek Innovation Center in Colorado. They didn't have the three or four-year start that you have. They had a year before they went to bond after the state said that project-based learning would be a state requirement. So you know, had a year. They didn't have a lot of time to build that excitement, to build that communications plan, but they did pass the first bond for $77 million. Four years later, they had to go back to bond to fund the new staff and equipment that was required for the school. That did a whole lot better because already people were seeing what it was doing for the community, what it was doing for their kids. And so that passed, what does it say there? 63.7% in favor. We got another one coming up next year in 2024. And now it's a whole different story because parents, community members are clamoring for more pathways, more program types and more spaces for students. So we're not too worried about that one passing, but it's all part of a planned comprehensive strategy to make sure that when we get to that day of voting, you get what you need. But if we don't get the SBA funding as well, that's not going to work because the voters need to see that that SBA funding is there and approved. So Greg has a lot more information about SBA funding. He's the expert.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Securing the support of the School Building Authority and the West Virginia Department of Education will be critical in the completion and the development of this project for Montague County Schools. Our history with the School Building Authority and the West Virginia Department of Education is strong as we work on them, around, work with them around the state on multiple projects of very different levels of complexity. Involving the SBA will start early in phase, in step one. That will be getting them involved with them attending planning meetings so the staff members will come so they can participate in those planning meetings and then also bringing the school board member up to date on their quarterly meetings. That'll be very important with this. The SBA's involvement early on in the planning process will allow the project to move smoothly when we go further into the design process. Before the bond call can be set on the ballot, Montague County Schools will have to get the approval from the School Building Authority to associate their name with your bond with the amount indicated for the Renaissance Academy. Upon passage of the bond in 2024, the Renaissance Academy project will be required to still go through the need submission process to get the additional funding as the project moves forward. I'm going to now talk into the completion of the project and how we're going to help you complete this project. The SBA, once the SBA grants have been executed and the bonds have been secured, the project will move into multiple design phases as we go forward with the team. The design team will use the information from the planning meetings along with the charrettes and the information gathered from Pam's planning meetings to talk about the, to talk about the project, including the educational specifications, the, the program and the vision of the Renaissance Academy to develop a final product. Documents will then be generated so that multiple people from the design team will be able to review it and do quality control as we move forward to generate a final set of documents for the contractor. Now I'm going to hand it over to Jason to talk more about the completing of the project during construction.
Thank you, Greg. So good evening. I'd just like to start by letting you all know how extremely excited I am for this project as I am a graduate of a CTC program myself. And I understand how these programs can lead to long-term careers. I've been doing this for 14 years now. I took two years of building construction at Putnam Career Technical Center back in 2005 and 2006. And in my opinion, that has been my stepping stone into this career. So just a little bit of my background in construction as a former project manager, estimator and scheduler for a local general contractor over the last 12 years has given me, in my opinion, the experience needed and the relationships with the local contractors over the 12 years to provide the much-needed contract administration that you're going to need on this complex project. So just a current example is the Herbert Hoover High School. So over the past three years, I have been providing CA services on the $100 million Herbert Hoover High School located in Canal County. This project was bid as a multi-prime project with 11 different prime contractors. And in my experience, multi-prime projects are a beast of their own, trying to coordinate amongst all the prime contractors, the design team, the clients, to try to make sure everyone is collaborating as a collective whole. And I'd very much like to provide these services for you all. You know, over the past three years, given my relationship with the local contractors, we've been able to manage this very difficult project and keep it moving with, you know, on schedule and on budget. And we much liked the opportunity, as I said. At this time, we may not know what issues are going to arise in your project, but having someone that can address these issues head-on, communicate these issues to the design team, to get the answers to the field very quickly is going to be a key to the successfulness of your project. So I really look forward to this project so other students are given the same opportunities that I was given. And quite frankly, that's what it's all about, right? So I'd like to pass it back over to John for closing remarks. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. You know, when we were talking about this project, what impressed me more than anything because I'm a flatlander, was the 2.3 million cubic yards of dirt they moved. That would kill a project in our region. But you know, there's a story here about the success of career technical education. Jason is a product of that story. From all of the projects we do, we connect, collect stories about students and the things that they do. I'll give you one. There's a student or was a student at Cherry Creek who wanted to own, her career goal was to own a chain of food trucks. And so what she did, she put her own pathway together. She put together culinary arts, business and automobile maintenance so that she could be ready. She is now a successful entrepreneur, pretty much straight out of high school. So all of those stories important. We can't wait to hear the stories that come out of Renaissance Academy because there will be stories and there will be many success stories. You stated it in the RFP. You said that this project is to be a precedent for career technical education and college prep in West Virginia. I can't see it anymore. We very much want to be a part of that process. We want to be with you at every stage of it. It will be our project and your project. By our, I mean everyone in the room today. So thank you very much. We have, we assure you have questions for us.
It was exactly 30 minutes.
No time on budget.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to click so that you could see spaces from that model that Camilo presented along with spaces and other facilities that are completed that serve the same purpose.
While we, while we answer.
Board members? Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. Well, I mean, just one thing I was thinking when I was reading through your book and then you brought it up again is Kalamazoo is, it seems to be the big project. In looking back on that project, because it's pretty awesome, would you, what would you change? What's one thing that you might do differently now that you've done it?
Let Pam answer that question because she's obviously figured.
Eager too.
So it actually, oh. So Kalamazoo just went into construction, right? So there was an early site package. We used it as an example because it's our most recent one. I can tell you, when I think back on Wesmac and the three campuses we did there, Pima Community College, Cherry Creek Innovation Campus and K Risa, there's, there's a process that we've continued to hone because it's so important to really engage clients on this kind of facility. It's a similar process, if you will, but then it is definitely shaped by the client. And so quite frankly, I think the best project I've ever done is the one that's just starting.
Okay. I have another question. So the undermining seems like it might be a daunting task to make sure that the land doesn't shift. What is the plan for?
I'm going to turn it over to the expert.
So we haven't fully developed or gotten to the site too much. We know a little bit about it, but we know that it was a topsoil strip mine. We know there are some deep mines further down. In some of our previous projects, we've used the concrete tubes and we filled out the lower ones, but this one we may have do some top and replacement. But that allows us to again, develop the site around the building and not have to develop the building around the site. So it will be something that will have to be investigated a little bit further once you get further into the project.
It's been done many times before.
I'm sure.
I would say, by saying that, we've been down that road before. That was going, my question is, have you been pretty accurate on how much concrete it would take on these other sites? Because we had a huge scare, I'll say that.
Well, the secret to that is making sure that you have contingencies in your budget for those extras that you know you're going to find and then doing all the investigation before to make sure that they're limited.
Good answer.
Dan?
Well, what is, what is your success rate dealing with the SBA? I mean, how?
Greg?
So we've worked with.
How good are you?
We've worked with the SBA since the early 90s and we've had multiple projects every year. We've scored successfully through their needs and MIP cycle. So this one being a new big project, have a showcase for the county and for the state, I think it has a really good opportunity to be successful. And we will be there right along the way. As part of that, we'll have the discussions and communication with the SBA from the beginning.
And given these types of projects, what has been like the biggest challenge you consistently see in overcoming, your biggest challenge and how do you overcome it? Like when you're dealing with these kind of projects? Because you've done the Cherry Creek, you've done Kalamazoo. So are there any common problems that you had with those places and things that you had to overcome?
I'm going to let Pam answer that question.
I feel like you're kind of looking at me. To be honest with you, I think one of the biggest challenges is cultural because people still think of CTE as VOTAC.
You guys need to get the mic.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry. One of the biggest challenges is cultural because some people still think of CTE as VOTAC. And so the conversations around really skill sets and pathways and that, you know, this doesn't necessarily mean that your little boo-boo isn't going to college. It's an and both conversation. So I can tell you, like at Cherry Creek, so they opened the fall before COVID. They're now up to 2,000 people, kids are there every week, right? And so they had originally targeted 750. And so we're starting to talk about phase two because now every, every parent says, oh my God, I want my child to have that opportunity to either be college-bound, career-bound, or figure out what they want to do. And so I would say that's the biggest challenge. You know, there's all the other stuff in terms of budgets, but cultural and then dream big, the aspirations, dream big. Cherry Creek said, we're never going to have a phase two. Four years later, we're looking at phase two, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Me next?
Okay. I think our biggest problem is going to be trying to narrow down how much we can afford, not what we want. I think we're probably, that's just my personal thought. It's, it's, when you look at all these pathways, they're very exciting. I think we're all trying to cultivate and build different industries in the state that may be able to avail themselves of some of these different career pathways. So I think that's going to be a challenge and you've very well described how you work to try to hone that down. So when you build these buildings, do you make them that you can adjust, move walls and as our trends change? Because every building we have here is built, when we did our building bond project, which was 2003 was when some of that started, we were replacing buildings that were built in 2000. in 1928. So the thought that this is not going to have to be futuristic and visionary in what we're able to do is not, it's just not practical.
So you've hit the nail on the head. The one, the only constant in education, from my experience, is change. It's even more so in career technical education and applied learning. And so the buildings we design are inherently flexible. You saw fairly large column spans, you saw drywall walls, you saw modular HVAC, so that everything is easy to replace. The idea is that maybe you can swap out the use of one of those large studio spaces, you can change it completely during the course of the summer, so that you're not interrupting education. So the buildings are very flexible, yes, movable walls, movable glass walls, movable solid walls, anything you can think of to allow those spaces to adapt very quickly and easily to different activities through the course of the year or through the course of the day. And that's complemented as far as possible by very, very flexible furniture, so that, again, that can be moved, you can change groupings without even thinking about it. And as I saw you nodding your head, when you said four years, that was crazy. We will design this building to have multiple phases of addition, and we should design that mountaintop to have paths for many future buildings that will allow you to grow this and make it a real center for training and industry in this region.
Because I think part of what we're looking at this for is to actually decompress some of our high schools, so that we're able to avail more students of those activities. I don't, I think there probably will be some students, as we have now at our current technical education center, that are full-timers there, but I think we're going to have more students in and out. So I have this horrible funding question, because the other thing that happened when we started our building project previously was costs continued to escalate after we received our initial funding amounts. And the way things work in the state of West Virginia, we're kind of hemmed in, we can't just say, "Oh, we're going to increase it 5%. We're going to do this." Even if our business base grows in the county, we can't all of a sudden accept more money, which is kind of different from how it is in some areas in some states. So I think one of the biggest challenges always is to ask for the right number when we go out for these voting initiatives, because we're also going to, the legislature has also changed the way we're able to do that. We're not going to be probably having standalone times for these different elections. So how do you ensure that you are estimating for acceptable growth? I don't think anyone could have foreseen the inflation growth that we're currently, we also can't predict natural disasters, because we had our building bond and then Katrina happened, which of course started the escalation, then the copper problems, then everything else. So how do you build that into the contingencies for, the worst thing to have to do is to get everybody excited, make these career and technical pathways, and then have to cut something out?
So we anticipated a question like this. We even rehearsed it, but yours is a little different. So I'm going to ask Greg to start out with that, and then we may have a couple of other members of our team chip in with additional perspectives.
We're past at this point, so we'd like Greg to speak to that question.
Thank you.
He meant Jason.
Yes.
I didn't mean Jason.
Greg, Jason, yes.
So I'm going to do my best to answer your question. So, you know, these guys are going to design around your budget. And we're using a local expert who's very well-versed in the changing market of West Virginia. We're also using a national expert that understands how costs are escalating over a national level. So I'm going to be reviewing that with those guys and the design team to make sure that once we come up to our design, when we go to the funding request, we are projecting to the best of our ability where we think we're going to be in three to four years. And we're using these local experts to do such.
Thank you very much. In those two years, something will change, and we'll be doing something different.
How we were going to put together a team to pursue this, we looked long and hard as to what we thought the best team was, and I think we're going to, hopefully we're going to show you we made the right decision. Of course, my name's Rick Colbank, and I'm the president and chief operating officer of Alpha Associates. I am the managing principal on the project. My colleague Chuck Branch, who is a co-project manager, will lead the civil efforts on the project. Michael Mills with Mills Group will be the co-project manager and community engagement leader for the project. And whenever we decided, we were looking for our national partner, because we believe this project deserved a national partner in order to do it correctly, we looked long, and Perkins &amp; Will was that partner. So hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to show you why we decided to work together as a team. Barbara Crum is with Perkins &amp; Will, is a planner and programmer. Carl Nuxton is the design principal, and Tom Anderson with CMTA is the MEP on, on the project, leading mechanical engineer. We also have a couple other consultants, protesting associates, who will work with us on the geotech portion of that. You all know this is going to be very important for this particular site. Blundell and Associates are, are cost estimators, third-party cost estimators. Why us? Whenever Michael and I were talking about this project and all, we decided that we thought we needed to team with a, with a local firm as well, so that we could give you the best of the local focus. And then the, I've already talked about Parkers, Parkinson &amp; Will, and the CTE experience that we brought with them, and they're going to, the remaining part of this slide, we're going to go through, and I think we're going to be able to step through and show you how we're going to achieve all those different items.
Well, just quickly, our agenda for today is, we're going to, we're going to share with you our approach and methodology. Really, Barbara's going to lead us through the community engagement piece, how we're going to tackle that as far as process. We're going to talk about programming and share with you a little bit of programming we've done already as a team. We're going to share some benchmarking, and you'll see Perkins &amp; Will's real expertise and experience in this type of project. And then Carl's going to share with us some design approach, an idea that we have put together as a team to share with you together. We're going to lead, Tom's going to lead our net zero discussion from an MEP perspective, and then we're going to open it up to talk about schedule and some Q and A with you all. Really, as we lead off with the approach and methodology, we've, we know from the RFQ, there's some key pieces for you all. We need to have the right people at the table. We need to have the superintendent, we need to have you as the board, we need to have faculty, the administration, the students, the community leaders, and certainly the business partners. And, you know, as we look forward to the workforce development, that's going to be a direct result of this facility, these are just four of the, the key stovepipe areas that we've talked about, construction and building trades, the manufacturing, healthcare, natural resources, be able to go to a March Wesson and engage them in the discussion. Tommy Larida, go to FCX and understand how, what their needs are on the line there. Swanson, go to WVU Medicine and Mon General. Those are folks that we need to pull in. And there's also some bigger picture overarching partners of the, of the partnership here in Mon County, the Chamber of Commerce, and certainly the Development Office. So those are folks that we, we're going to have at the table and engage in the process.
And talking, first of all, let me say how exciting this project is. You don't do this very often, and we're thrilled to even be interviewing for it. A CET college prep thing is a very, very unique and interesting project, so we're thrilled to be here. Sort of building on what Michael talked about, we do have a programming and planning process, and what we really ask of you is to include all of those members that he talked about. And we'll ask you in the beginning to set up a committee of 40 or so people and do a visioning session. We want buy-in from the community, we want you to be advocates for the project, and we really want everybody as a stakeholder to have a say in it. So we, we often do a workshop, and one of the first things we do in a workshop is an aspirational object sort of exercise. And we ask everybody to bring an object or a picture or something that epitomizes their vision for this project. And everybody, we ask them to introduce themselves, to say what their interest is in the project, and then really talk, why is, why have they brought this object? And it helps us set the mission and the project goals. And I always find it sort of really emotional, because you get all kinds of things from people. We've had, you know, people bring a giraffe, because they want to stretch the students. We've had people bring technology. We've had all kinds of things, but it really sets the tone for the project. So we would ask for you to do that as our first sort of initial instinct or exercise for our visioning. We also do a bunch of other things in the workshop. We do bubble diagramming of what things you think should be near each other. We do student workshops. You can see in the top, some students who had a great time. They always put the cafeteria in the middle, whenever you ask them how they think about, you know, they either put the cafeteria or the football field in the middle always. Those are the two things we get. But then we do also a visual listening, where we'll put up a bunch of images of other career tech and college prep schools, insides, outsides. We'll give you usually five red dots and five green dots, and we ask you to put dots on what resonates with you. The green dots on things that you really like, that you'd like to see, the red dots on things that don't resonate, you don't want us to repeat. And then we ask about sort of words and things. We do a bunch of different visioning exercises with you. And basically, what we would envision for this, if it works with you, is four workshops throughout the process to really do the programming. The first one, as I say, is really visioning and setting goals with a big stakeholder group. The second one might be a smaller group, where we meet with the user groups, each sort of department, each sort of facility, CTE group that would want to be in this building. And then we do the student workshops. And a lot of the really most meaningful things we find come out of the student workshops. They're there, they know, they know what they need. It's always very interesting. The third workshop, we come to you with a program, a draft program, draft diagrams of how we think it would go together, and site diagrams, and work through with you if that resonates with you, and finally come back with the finalized program and the finalized building diagram and site diagram before we start the schematic. So that sort of does our programming process. And just to give you an idea on what one of those workshops might look like, that visioning, first visioning workshop, the aspirational object, then we will share with you trends that we see in career tech and college prep. And there are things that we see in, in K-12, but things that we see in higher education and things that we see in the workforce. So there's a broad group of sort of different trends we'll show you and see what resonates again. And then we sort of break into small groups, and the kind of questions we'd ask the groups to sort of talk about and then report back to the whole larger group. Skills you think students need, partnerships that you think would be good. And one of my favorite questions always is to say to you, at the end of this project, if I said to you, "Success was," or "Success is," how do you finish that sentence? You know, what does this project really do in the end? And then the visual listening and some other stuff, but that sort of just gives you an idea. One of the other things that I think is so great about Perkins &amp; Will is we have a branding group, and I think telling the story in that visioning, we often ask, you know, we'll ask you about stories, stories from the high school, stories from the community, and begin to embed them in the branding, and run this through the building, and it's sort of really, kids are very proud of it. It tells their story in a graphic way, and it's a simple, inexpensive way to tell the story. This happens to be a Martin Luther King Middle School. And again, we told Dr. King's story, and then we put a bunch of other sort of leaders down the corridor with quotes from them. So just embedding that story of the kids. And then just going back to the kinds of things we'll talk about in career and tech education, you know, the model of the real world, corporate sponsors, workforce partnerships, integrating the general education, the CTE programs, and even CTA work as community service. Those are sort of trends that we see, that we'll share with you where we see them. And then the other thing we often talk about is different kinds of spaces in the CTE building, and again, getting your reaction to this. Specialized spaces, dirty and clean, flexibility, knowing this building's probably around for 40, 50 years. And as I said to them before, every CTE building I've done, it never ends up the same programs day one that they started talking about in the beginning. So make it flexible, let it be able to change as your business and needs change. Strategic planning, how things are located in the building. And then learning on display, which is a great recruiting mission for this. Just showing you some of the high bay spaces. We tried to glean from Michael and Rick, some of the, some of the industries here, some of the things you might teach, and just a little bit of reading about it. This is just a first pass at things that could possibly, and automotive in a high bay, construction, building trades in a high bay system, automated machinery and exploration, excavation, that kind of thing in a high bay space, welding in a high bay space. And then being flexible about those high bay spaces, if they're not used for one of those sort of trades, being able to use them for other things. And similarly, I think this is a wonderful sort of flexibility and strategic planning. This was a high bay building, but they have the classroom in it, too. So you have hands-on work, and you have sort of desk work, instruction, and then hands-on, which I think is great. Again, this is a trades building where you see everything going on. I think it's great, kids can see every sort of thing and be engaged in what they might want to take, see different things. Similarly, the sort of hands-on learning and the direct instruction in the health sciences. I mean, I'm amazed at the amount of healthcare in this area, so I would assume there would be a lot of health sciences, maybe dental, maybe nursing, maybe EMT, maybe pharmacy, you know, all those kinds of tracks in the health sciences. I'm, again, learning on display, seeing what's going on, engaging kids, recruiting kids for different programs. And I love this one, again, you talked about, I think, in your RFP, STEM and sciences as well as math, you know, being able to have the science rooms and see into the sciences. And one of the things, when we finish that programming, having shown you lots of things and seeing what resonates with you, we meet with the user groups, we'll go through and we'll put square footage to every one of those programs. I just took some here, I thought that might be relevant to you. But I think the most important thing in this slide is, we take that out to the gross square footage, and then we take it out to a dollar figure, and we really put a price to every piece of that program. So if you get to a piece where you don't want three health science rooms, and we, it's too expensive, we take one out and we add something else, because we never want to start the schematic design without the budget and the program aligned. And this is an easy way to go through every piece and have you really say, "We do need this, we do want this, we can't afford this." And, you know, again, this is, Carl and I kind of ran a program, and our best guess at this point is a building that's in the range of 125,000. And we kind of based that off, I think, one of your CEFP things that talked about 700 students here. You know, we, you know, this is, you know, we're presupposing. Who knows if you have 1,500 students or 800, wherever we end up, but we, you know, we said, "Let's take 700 as the baseline." We're thinking in terms of 120, 130,000 square feet, something like that.
Well, this is our site. Alpha was able to assist the board earlier in doing some pre-purchase work on this site. And I think we know quite a bit about this site right now. The main access is probably going to come off of Route 7 and up this way, probably with the secondary access off of 119. Very likely, we're going to do it that way. But as we know, this site is a mine site. It's been both surface mined and undermined. So you've got overburdens as much as 100 feet in different locations. So we're going to have to do some special things whenever we start talking about foundations to make sure that we design the structures of this building properly. Same deal with the undermines. We believe the undermines are probably deep enough, and we're not going to have to worry about them, but it's something we'll look at and make sure that we take into account as we go into the building design. We've designed a lot of project on old mine sites, sites with undermining. If you, if you work in Morgantown, in the Morgantown area, you, just about everything has some level of mining associated with it. So with regard to that, I think we've got a good handle. The area, you've got about 150 total acres here. Of that, you've probably got somewhere between 50 and 60 acres that are actually usable in different, in different areas. So I think the idea would be to make sure that we make the best use of the usable area that we have. This is just a slide that gives you an idea of the different coal seams that we, we need to be dealing with. 2007 Google Earth image, this mine was actually, the surface mine was actually active till about 2012. So we've, we've had, you know, just under 10 years of consolidation of that, of that soil. So once again, foundations are going to be paramount. We need to make sure we, we take that into account, and that includes the types of buildings as well as the foundations and other things as we go through there.
Thanks, Rick. So we thought the best way to show you how we work is show you how we work, and show a little bit about some ideas about the approach to a design here. So certainly, we look at the site opportunities, and you see here, as Rick described, access being a key consideration, what is flat being a key consideration as we think about the usable space on the site, we think about the hydrology, and we think about some of the existing conditions. I think we also want to take advantage of views and other aspects of the site that are essential, especially as we talk about learning on display. We want to take advantage of thinking about how we recruit students to this great experience, which will be the Renaissance Academy. As Tom and I will talk about, part of what we do in architecture is really thinking about the environmental analysis of the building, how we orient the building. And so proper orientation building ties directly into what Tom's going to talk about in, in the systems and getting you to net zero. So that'll be a key part of this integration between architecture and mechanical engineering. Certainly, solar orientation being a key part, the wind- Certainly, solar orientation being a key part, the wind orientation being a key part, and then thinking about the hydrology again of the site and how we tie that into the story and even use that as an educational tool.
One of our design strategies as a team really is to create a sense of place. We know this is really going to be a campus, an island unto itself. So it's going to be important that the landscape, the site design, and the architecture come together is really important to us. As we've talked about, the views, views from and the views from 79 are key, and you'll see some of Carl's great sketches here in a few minutes. And then looking for future growth. I mean, this is going to be a phase project, so how do we maximize that 50-plus acres of site and look for that growth? And really kind of work with the program flexibility. Barbara mentioned that, and I think the architecture you'll see here in a few minutes really plays to that potential of being flexible and allow you all programmatically to grow as well. So, and the other piece, from our perspective, you all know Mills Group's really founded on a lot of historic preservation work, integrating that history of the site, maybe an ode, an iconic piece of the coal mining, to that, that history of what's happening here in Mon County. And that may be through the architecture and maybe through the environmental graphics as well within the building.
Yeah, so then tying that to other things, like we talked about visibility of the school, access of the school, talking about that flexibility in terms of that access component. Certainly, the environmental conditions, solar and wind will blend that in and then maximizing the net zero, as I discussed. So we put that all together, and the blue box that you see there is really thinking about criteria that we think is a good starting point to discuss. And this takes in consideration what Barbara talked about in terms of the program, what we're talking about in terms of site access and site needs in terms of parking. So we're looking at maybe, for a phase one at 700 students, probably 10 to 12 acres is a need. And as Rick said, you know, we have about 55 acres of usable area there. So there are opportunities in a first phase. But we also want to make sure we don't, you know, paint ourselves into a corner, if you will. So thinking about the flexibility of the site. We'll definitely need parking there since it is a remote site, thinking about that. And then, and then building in any future growth that we might need. So taking all those considerations, we took the thought a little bit further and started thinking about what buildable sites there might be within this 55-acre zone or within the 150 acres that you own. And certainly, I think cost is a consideration, and we truly don't want to put a lot of money into infrastructure, but that is something that you might want to add more money into if it enhances visibility. So certainly, a lot of the site opportunities on the east side might have added infrastructure costs, getting the roadways, getting the utilities to that part of the site, versus maybe the site in the lower left here on the west side is easy access, but future growth, maybe that limits you, so paints you into a corner. So maybe we, we consider that, but look elsewhere. So maybe those three sites, that 10 to 12 acres I talked about in phase one could be an opportunity. So we started talking about it this way, in the sense of thinking about orientation, access, future growth, and I'll go through some of our thinking here. Maybe positioning the campus, as we're calling it, this Renaissance Academy campus, on the eastern side of the site, up at the top of the hill, so it really maximizes the visibility. So as you drive down 79, you can see this building, it becomes a beacon. It becomes a beacon for the county, it becomes a beacon for the state, right? So that's what you're trying to do here. So very visible. We also wanted to plan for growth, and that growth, we imagine expanding sort of north and south. And that could pinwheel off of the diagram that you're seeing here. But we also want to make sure that we maintain wayfinding and visibility. So as you drive in, you can easily find where you're going. So that's why we sort of positioned it on the existing sort of mining road. So just some thinking around how we might approach the project. And so taking that a little bit further, zooming in a little bit, you can see the diagram pretty simple. And, and we're talking a little bit about program organization, those high bay, low bay components. We're talking about teaching and instruction. We're talking about connecting to the parking. And thinking about that, if you look at this diagram, we, we imagine there might be a center bar that has that instruction spaces. And so that could be some of the STEM programs, some of the typical classrooms in the middle part. That might be a two-story space, a two-story volume. Take advantage of an entry experience along the south, but also take advantage of natural experience to the north as well. You can see that sort of yin yang with that shape in the middle that says instruction and collaboration. To those, we'd attach, we're thinking maybe you attach some sort of collaboration zone. So those are those really energetic spaces that bring the students together, that let them see and engage with what, all the different programs going on here. And there might be a high bay space to the north and perhaps a low bay space to the south. That could be connected to a project yard to really engage those students in their projects inside and out as well. So you imagine garage doors opening up, students could bring their projects out into project yard, or there could be a great event that happens out in that project yard as well. So taking it through there. If you think about the collaboration spaces, we were imagining them a little bit like our project caps here that we shared with you in the RFP. Maybe a multi-story space, a space that you could use for informal teaching, a space that you might use for events or for casual gathering. You could have the ability to look down and activate, and maybe it's connected out to the outside, as you saw in the diagram previous. So there's, there's a great opportunity there. And then thinking about the high bay spaces and those collaboration zones between the high bay spaces, we're showing you here what we did at Collin College in Texas. And the thing that we love about this, first, the daylight's fantastic. This is a very efficient building. We take advantage of the ability to have students on the left-hand side of this image in the classroom spaces on two levels. They're able to look down into the high bay space and engage. So they can see, they can get instructed, and then they can take that right into the high bay space and learn from that. So that would be sort of our thinking around the diagram and the organization. So I was talking a little bit about expansion. You can see the red arrows, just the notion that you could start to pinwheel off of that diagram, north and south. We heard maybe an administration building might be in the works up there, or transportation building, so you could really think about planning that. Maybe there's a future access in working with Rick about how we connect to Route 19 and make another secondary entry to the site, and then, of course, expand parking as well. And then we tie that all into our sustainable story, and Tom will go a little bit deeper into that. But just thinking about north light, daylight, we're thinking about solar orientation, I think we have the opportunity, as we drill down into the numbers, to really get this to net zero in terms of shape and form and energy uses, and we'll dive into that a little bit more. And then tying into the hydrology of the site and some of the other components to really make that part of the overall learning experience too. So we did a couple sketches, maybe approach views, what that might be experience-wise. Took that a little bit further, and then we started thinking about, you know, just how we might think about it. And again, these are just ideas just to get you interested or disinterested. Hopefully, you're interested. You know, the notion that you come in, we're coming from the southwest, there's an arrival court, perhaps there's a nice central space for gathering, so it truly is a campus. There's some parking areas adjacent that could also serve other adjacent buildings. I talked about the project yards that maybe build off the north and south wings of the building. To that, there's a, I think there's an essential landscape component as well, so don't forget the landscape and creating a great environment here. And it's really about setting up and taking advantage of this great site, including those views off to the surrounding mountains to 79 and to Route 19. Taking that a little bit further in terms of thinking about the technology and the integration and really designing for optimization, and then thinking about the history, perhaps there's a tower component in there that really serves as a beacon to the building. So it's combining a bunch of different ideas together in a thoughtful way. And even prioritizing budget, maybe focusing budget in the middle, the two side wings become sort of less expensive components. So we could think about prioritizing budget that way as well. So a little animation to show you some of our thinking, and then combining that together in a larger context for discussion as well. So you can see some of those ideas there. So it really got us excited, and we felt like there's a good, there's a good story to tell there. Again, we throw all this out and start new with you guys, but just to show you how we work. Think about a magical beacon on the hill. This is our Bigelow project in Maine overlooking the hill. You could drive down 79 and see something out there. What a great recruiting tool. There's, there's learning on display right there. People say, "What, what is going on there?" Our Collin College, a wonderful example of technology, of learning environments dedicated to CTE. Again, as Barbara described, we'd love to share with you some of these projects as benchmarking, so you can think about it for your project as well. So let me turn it over to Tom, talk a little bit more about net zero.
Yeah, so this is a very exciting project. I'm just going to jump right into it. So the big part of this is data-driven design. We need to have data from previous projects to help influence what this project is going to be. So we have data that says, "Hey, we need..." Typical high schools run around a 45 to 50 EUI. You can think of EUI as miles per gallon in a car, but a lower number is better. So we're shooting for, typical net zero building starts about a 35 EUI. And it doesn't cost more money to be more efficient. It's all about cost shifting. We're really good with working with our partners here on shifting the cost on projects. Making better envelopes, it's cheaper to spend money on a better envelope than it is to put in a more expensive HVAC system or a larger HVAC system. And then that turtles down to saving money on your electrical systems, because if you don't have as large of a mechanical system, you can have a smaller electrical system. And then because we've got the task of designing a net zero building, we want to be able to wring out as much energy out of that building as we can, and that's going to save us on purchasing solar for a building like this. We started looking about filters. A lot of times, we're coming into projects, the stakeholders don't have the awareness of net zero. You guys have put out an RFP that said, "Hey, we want to be net zero." We, we're kind of past that first filter. Now you're trying to find a team that can help you achieve that, design it, help with the estimating, and make sure that we get a project that's in budget and get through those, those filters. And then it's, we help get through the next couple of hurdles of construction and CX. Once we're really past that estimating and VE, we've really hit the big hurdles there. This is a project that's CNCA did. It's a CTE Net Zero Academy in Orlando, Florida. I like this image. It just shows how the students are interacting with the space, but still, it really looks like a, like a high school from the inside and the outside, except it's got those support spaces that the students use to collaborate with each other and work on their projects. This is Frederick Douglass High School. It is the most energy-efficient high school that CNCA did with Perkins &amp; Will. It's got a 19 EUI. And like I said earlier, most high schools are between a 45 and 50 EUI. So this is a very efficient high school. And when we look at it, it looks like a normal high school, modern-day high school on the inside. We've got a lot of windows, collaboration spaces. There's nothing that we've lost in the design, architectural design of this building, but it's, it's a very high-performing building. There is a lot of opportunity, though, when you're doing a net zero building, to have interactions, interactive spaces that tie back into the architecture and the mechanical and the MEP systems in the building. This is just one example. This happens to be an elementary school, but you can make it more interactive for high school, obviously. But learning about solar panels, hot water converters there in the back from solar, and just seeing how different panels attract the different sun based on the sun angles at different times in the year. I'll just hit on this briefly. We all have experience with helping bring funding to projects. One of the options, and we'd like to educate you on it further at a later date, is the Inflation Reduction Act. This is money that's available for for-profits and not-for-profits. It's part of the legislation that was passed in August of last year. And lastly, I think this one, my last slides, yeah. So achieving decarbonization, net zero, I'm just tying this back into our concepts. We have solar PV. The orientation of our building is really good for solar PV with how they're laying it out, and there's a lot of options that we can look at. But that's one of the things that we work with and collaborate with the design team on, is making sure we look at different options for orientation for maximizing solar PV. Also, daylighting. If, if we can keep lights off in a room because we have good daylighting, that's a huge positive in a net zero building. So that's another thing that we'll look at. And then geothermal is one of, in, in an area like this, that's one of the easiest or one of the ways that helps us achieve net zero. I think we have a really good site for it. We're talking with Rick, the site's set up well for it. We'll eventually have to do test wells to see what kind of energy we can get, not energy, but conductivity we can get out of the ground, but it's, we'll look at that. And then just indoor air quality, I'm sure you may be aware of the Harvard study that looks at CO2 for cognitive learning. So reducing your CO2 in your learning spaces helps with students achieve better academically because they're able to have, think clearer. So it's a documented study that Harvard did about five or six years ago.
Okay. Right. Yeah. As far as schedule? This is kind of a schedule we'd like to present to you. We think that the initial stages of this project, the initial site planning, building programming, benchmarking, will take about 14 weeks to do. Schematic design, an additional 16 weeks, so that this project can be done in about, the first phase of this project should be able to be completed in about 30 weeks. That would get us, toward the end of the year, we would have you all the valuable information you need in order to be able to make some future decisions. If, if something needs to happen, it needs to happen quicker, we can react to that. But we think this is a very doable schedule, given the number of meetings that we think we're going to need and how we need to move forward.
So again, just to reinforce the YUS, I think we've put together a team that has, has the local focus committed to the local area, and that's, that's important to us. I mean, that's important to, both Rick and I have had students come up through the system, and we want to leave our legacy and further that. But we also felt very important that we have national expertise with Perkins &amp; Will with their CTE experience. We know that you all have a focus, and we certainly have the ability to bring to the table some industry leaders to become stakeholders and engage in this process. Right now, we're working with Solar Haller down in Huntington on their corporate headquarters. I think they're going to be a partner. Woodcraft is a, is a partner, client of ours. I think they're going to be somebody that can bring some, some attention to this too. So I think, you know, we have the ability to bring those corporate folks to the table and speak to partnerships and mentorships.
And the net zero building design expertise, I hope we've tried to demonstrate our abilities in order to bring that to bear. And I think probably finally, and maybe just as important, we have a proven relationship with the Board of Education, with the SBA and the State Board of Ed. Those are, we've been, we've worked with them for, you know, well over 30 years in my, in my career. So I think with, with all that said, we're bringing you a very qualified team. So with that, just turn it over to you all for questions.
Couple minutes over on the presentations, if anyone wants to ask some questions.
Yeah, I just want to know, when you do projects like this, what is like the biggest challenge you face having to go to cover?
Who would like to tackle that? Biggest challenge?
You start? The biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge? Golly, that's a hard one, because everything's great. It's easy. Now, the biggest challenge is probably getting through, getting consensus, and we work really hard in that programming phase, because I know you're going out for money, and you really want everybody to buy in this project. So we aren't going to leave you until we really have consensus. An advocate for your project, I want everybody who's participated in the stakeholding exercises to really say, "This is important, we need it, and I'm out there, you know, selling it."
I do think too, that given what the ultimate price tag of this project's going to be, regardless of where it comes in, it's going to be a very high price for the citizens of Mon County. So it's going to be very important that we're able to demonstrate the value for that money. I'm a taxpayer, and I know that whenever we pass bonds, it, it comes out of all of our pockets. So we have to make sure that we present a project that the community and the other stakeholders in the area can, can support.
In doing a CTE building that's net zero, it's, it's got some difficulties. But if we have the right people at the table to help with decision-making and understanding your guys' uses of the space, that's really going to help us make a successful project.
So do you help, plan to help prepare the application, if you will, for partnerships with the school building authority, with federal entities? I mean, we keep talking about this has all been undermined, and, you know, there should be federal dollars for some of this reclamation of some of these. Do you have a team that's assembled or ready to go for, to assist with some of these fundraising?
Yeah, I think, I think the short answer to that is yes, we have the, the ability between all the consultants that we have and the, and the folks that we, experience we have to bring that funding to bear. There are, there are a lot of different sources. There may be some AML money out there that we can, we could obtain. And quite frankly, this is a really good time to be looking for some of that money while it's still available.
Thank you.
Actually, Tita, I showed a question I was going to ask about the buying reclamation money and those types of things. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I guess, I mean, you kind of answered what my big question going through everybody's book with the undermined. If you were to happen, it sounds to me like you're planning on building where it's not undermined, more so than on the undermined. Is there a problem, like another level of difficulty or more expense if you were to build?
I I think until we get real core bearings, so we know exactly where we're putting the the buildings, it's tough to answer that question because depending on what what the results of those are, there's, you know, a myriad of ways of trying to solve those problems. You know, it may be deep foundations, it may be over excavating a portion of the site and bringing good material in in order to to be able to do that. There's just a lot of ways to handle that. But we really have to have more information to know, and that may influence where that these buildings go. I mean, we may need to to shift the building because a certain area is is not as good as as another area.
Kind of tang on that, too, as as opposed to building up. If you look and there's not enough ways to build the foundation solid, you start to spread out instead of building multi-level.
Right.
So do you see any issue with spreading out? I know we have a lot of property in a sense, but it also looking four or five years down, you see any problems? If we do have to spread out, does it change your view of that?
From an architectural standpoint, I don't know that there's.
No, I mean, certainly, you know, you get maybe a little site costs, I guess, out of it. One of the things that we've employed, especially on difficult sites like this, is thinking about lightweight structures, like perhaps as mass timber, a lot lighter than steel or concrete might be an approach. And that could be, and then I think you saw in our diagram, maybe prioritizing the budget around maybe a more robust building sort of in the middle and and some more efficient buildings on the as saddlebags or something. So we could look at some other options like that, too.
I do like your idea of it being a beacon, being able to see it from seventy-nine. That's I agree.
Yeah, I mean, the best part of the project is just trying to attract students and say, what's this? I want to work, I want to, you know, learn there kind of thing. I think those are the, that's the success of it. And especially, you know, you guys are thinking so progressively around the project here. And I think that's a great, will be a great attractor for the state, the entire state, and maybe the country beyond it, too. So that's great.
You know, the one thing is, I think I can, we've, we have probably worked on every type of site in the state of West Virginia, everything from pyridic shells up at the Engineering Science Building in in that area to we just completed a building for the DOH District Seven where they took a a golly and just dumped all the construction material from I-79 when they were building it. Undoubtedly, the worst foundations systems that we've ever had to deal with. So I think we have the ability to do that and make sure that we do it efficiently because every dollar we put into the foundations is a dollar that we can't put into the the part of the building that really matters to the people who use it.
And that's where I was headed with that. Do we spend more money going up, or do we say, okay, we can go, so let's go out and spend some bucks on it?
Yeah, I think that's yet to be determined, and certainly we would be looking at that all the way through.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about some of our recent projects that you guys have worked on. And I looked at the Alabama school, and the one thing that's missing in there, I don't see a budget. But can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
That's for the Perkins and Will group, I would, because it's.
Sure. You know, everybody looks at our work and it says it's really expensive. We work for school systems all over the country, and they all have a budget day one, and you have to meet it. And so, you know, our cyber school was probably, I think it's forty-two million, something like that, which was right in line with the budget. I think the budget was forty-three. And so we just knew you have to work to that, and that's, you know, and we made a lot of, you know, we we always put ideas out there, and if they're expensive, we give you another idea. We're going to push the envelope as far as we can for that forty-two million and then come back. I did run, when I ran the numbers here, I ran it at four-eighty, just sort of in that hypothetical thing. And that's what we are seeing right now. Unfortunately, construction costs sort of where we're working in Florida, North Carolina, and the East Coast, sort of the Atlantic region. You know, it may be more here because it may be harder to get to. I don't know. I'd be real curious what your last schools have cost, and if it's less than that, great. But we were sort of running it at four-eighty, and somewhere I read a seventy-two million dollar budget, and I took off of that like twenty-five percent for soft costs, and I backed it out, and it seems reasonable. You know, so I, you know, we are very conscious of sort of thinking, what's your budget? What's your total project budget? How much is your soft cost? What do we have for construction and designing to that budget?
Speak quickly to projects, this will be the last question, for recent projects.
Trying to think what we just, we just did lately. You know, the four-eighty, we're doing a dorm school of the performing arts that's running about four-seventy-five right now, a square foot.
I mean, just, I'm not worried about budget. That was just a comment. I'm talking about work experience. Try to get a little bit of work experience.
The Orlando, we're doing, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, we're, right now, we're doing a program, a master, master plan study for Orlando, Orange County Public Schools in Orlando, which is a forty-four acre site. They were doing very similar type programming. We're looking at a couple of different options there. There's a, there's a renovation aspect, there are a new build aspect for them. So that's a recent study that we're, we're in the throes of right now in the planning and programming. So we can certainly bring some of that to you. It'd be great to share with you Collin College, the one in Texas that we showed you the image of. That one's really interesting because it's got, it prioritized the budget around the front building being sort of the feature piece, and then the back buildings are are simple butler buildings, basically. And so prioritizes the budget, but maximizing the value to the to the client and and an ability to add on. That would, that is, we put that in our book. It's one long building and then three fingers that come out of it. So that could be one of those prototypes that we work with you on in terms of focus as well. We're also doing a project at Warwick Community College in terms of CTE programs. So there are technical trades building there in in Maryland. That's a recent one that's going to open this year, focused around more of the trades for the Eastern Shore there. Again, bringing in partners. And then we've done some interesting projects like CCAM, which is in, it's in Petersburg, Virginia, which is a consortium of bringing industry partners and universities and other interested parties together in a space, actually, that's it right there, in a space that can, that they, you can, you can rent out space, bringing the industry partners to do their projects, bringing the universities to do their research, and sort of mining that, what they call sort of the death valley between education and implementation. There's sort of that death valley between in terms of bringing things over. So us, so a wide variety from the K-12 realm to the Community College realm to the university realm and sort of bringing some of those come along together.
Cool, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, guys.
You guys got the floor, thank you.
All right, are we all set? Great, okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, and thank you again for inviting us today. I'm Kieran Wilmus, I'm a partner with Cribben Parker Architects. And on behalf of our entire team, I wanted to thank you for letting us join, join you tonight and spend some time together with you and your board and your constituents. So we're really thrilled to be in person with you finally after all this buildup and finally discuss, have a chance to discuss your exciting project and your exciting journey ahead. We first learned about Renaissance Academy in the summer of 2021 when we met Amanda, and it was clear from the start, very start of our conversations that Mon County was looking to do something quite different and quite special here. And, you know, really challenge some of the norms of school planning and really try to capitalize on the opportunities on your new site with your new programs and really build something to last and unique in Mon County to keep families here, to keep businesses here, and really help perpetuate the local economy. And your RFQ language really reinforces that, and we really appreciate, appreciate the way that was written. We haven't had the privilege of working together yet as a collective team. But we can reassure you that we have worked with counties and districts and communities just like yours. We've worked throughout West Virginia collectively as a team and Western Maryland. We've even worked in the South Hills of Pittsburgh on a school site on an old mine. So we want to reassure you that we understand that on these, on these types of projects that budget, we understand budgets are modest and that the constraints are real and that the community buy-in is evidenced by the way you're holding these public meetings and sharing this with your folks are very much a critical part of the buy-in. And it's a part of the process that we fully commit to and take to heart and will keep with us throughout this whole project. This is the basis, this understanding and this commitment is really the basis of the partnership between Cribben Parker, McKinley, and our team and the folks that we brought with you today. So do some brief introductions of the team and talk about our roles a little bit more. Again, I'm Kieran Wilmus. I'm one of the principals and partners with Cribben Parker Architects. We're a woman-owned firm in suburban Maryland. I'm actually the proud product of this high school CTE process myself. So my career is indebted to the very programs that you're thinking about and developing further at Renaissance Academy. I'm joined by Anthony Lucarelli. He's one of our principals at our firm. He'll be the design principal and master planner and help lead the planning and master planning efforts for our project. And he's going to act actually as the surrogate client, sort of on your behalf with our internal team, with a career-focused mindset throughout the process. Laura Smiles is with us, our educational planner. She brings a true focus, truly the educational specifications and the development of your OPR document. We'll get into that in a little bit more detail. Laura brings a learner-centered focus to each and every one of her endeavors and a high degree of energy and enthusiasm and passion for designing around the learning experience. And we'll follow that through the design process as well. Ernie Delator joins us from McKinley, our partners locally. He's going to be our shepherd for the, the, all the local processes, the SBA process, which he'll get into in more detail, helping, helping to shepherd through all the Department of Education protocols. And at the end of the, of this initial process, helping to ensure that we get the community buy-in that's critical for a successful bond passage. Amber Ravenscroft joins us from Adventure Group. Amber brings a really unique perspective with her and her colleagues from Morgantown-based firm. They have deep connections in the West Virginia educational system, but also in the workforce and talent development pipelines that we think will really help feed and nurture these early planning stages. And then Paula Guffey from CMTA, they've been a long, long-term partner of ours in energy innovation and and sustainability as well. We worked together on the first two net zero projects in Baltimore City Schools. We're really proud of, they're operating at a very low EUI and doing great. We're going to keep the agenda very simple for this evening. We want to talk a little bit about some of the aspirations and guiding principles that are fueling some of our thinking, talk about how we built our team around that in direct response that really focused the bulk of our time on the ideas for the new Renaissance Academy. And then we're happy to take your questions and continue that discussion and Q and A. When we first started to consider this project, and we've been chewing on this a lot over the last few weeks, getting our hands around some initial guiding principles that are helping to fuel our thinking that we think capture some of what we learned about you and your project along the way. We've read so much about how outsourcing and automation and artificial intelligence and all these new elements are showing up more and more in our daily lives on a very regular basis. We don't know how these new industries are going to continue to emerge over the next twenty, thirty years and beyond. We don't know all the skill sets that will be included and involved in emerging, those emerging fields. What we do know is that CTE and college prep education has a significant role to play in helping to design, to cultivate the the innovations that will lead us into tomorrow and the students that will help us get there. And Mon County has a lot to offer there as well. And we understand the career literacy and the ecosystem that you're looking to create system-wide, not just in Renaissance Academy, but beyond those doors as well, that these project, that these students will give back to their community in real ways and that the building itself will help to create a prideful landmark that all in the community can be proud of and that will help anchor your new master plan, will commit to sustainability on the site, and help restore the natural landscape around it. So it's those guiding principles that helped inform the folks that are in the room with us today that we custom, kind of tailored around those guiding principles. And we're in direct alignment with McKinley and our goals and values in alignment with yours as well. Both of our firms, Ernie and ours, have a forty-year history of committed to community-based design and delivering excellence in educational design. We've delivered, we've delivered dozens and dozens of schools throughout the region that we're, we're happy to share our experience on. We've also tailored our team around some of the specific goals that will be nuanced and very specific to Renaissance Academy. Bringing the adventures on to bring a unique educational perspective is key to that as well as what, what Cribben Parker and McKinley bring. Partners that bring successful project and school delivery to West Virginia that know your protocols, know your systems and delivered success, the regional insights that go along with that, and partners that that are committed to sustainability and will help you achieve your net zero goals on your campus. So the the main topic we want to focus on today is really your ideas about Renaissance Academy. We've been thinking about this light bulb diagram and sort of approaching it from two different facets. One, the learner experience and really maximize the opportunities for all of your learners and also the process by which we get there. We purposely are not showing you a lot of resolved solutions. We don't think that that's, that's what today's conversation about. Today's about dreaming big, about getting our hands around, asking the types of questions, identifying some of the challenges ahead and the opportunities ahead. And we're going to walk through some of the five steps from your RFQ to help do that and hopefully demonstrate how we'll work together once, once we move forward. We're going to do that through a little bit of storytelling at the onset, too. And the first one, first story that we're going to focus on is at Edison High School. Edison is the career and technology hub for the largest school district in Montgomery County, Maryland. Just like your schools, there's partnerships formed like you just did with your local community college, offering dual enrollment and college credits to graduating high schoolers, which is terrific. Local foundations for, from all the local industries participate in the planning, programming, equipping, making sure that these CTE environments are professional grade for their students and their future workforce. One of the unique elements about Edison that we'd like to share is Junior Achievement, which is a global nonprofit that's focused on career readiness and 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 building a strong educational backbone for educational systems. They're actually up for the Nobel Peace Prize this year. They worked with, in conjunction with Montgomery County, to fund a finance park that occupies the entire top floor of Edison CTE Center. And that brings middle school students from all over the county on a daily basis into a half-day youth finance, personal finance simulation run by dozens of county and local volunteers every day. So on an annual basis, that brings eleven thousand seventh graders from every middle school in the county through the front doors of Edison to have an immersive experience. They're given tours by student ambassadors from Edison, seeing that pride and in in ownership of their building, showcasing the programs that they're on the cusp of being exposed to as incoming high schoolers. We think it's a great demonstration of how partnerships can be leveraged to create a true win-win, to raise awareness for the special programs that are going on, get the families there and and really raise the bar again for that level of communication. And Amber's going to share another story with us.
So West Virginia has a lot of innovation already happening, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that and we want to build on the great things that are already happening in the state and in Mon County. And so a great example is James Rumsey Technical Institute's company lab. It's an initiative of West Virginia Entrepreneurship Education Collaborative. And while Edison talks about bringing students in, this project talks about bringing students back to CTE and how it has really a root in the community. So it's a Student and Community Entrepreneur Center housed at James Rumsey. It realized that a lot of our CTE students were graduating with technical skills, but not the entrepreneurial skills to stay in their community and launch those businesses, as well as some of those adult students. So it provides technical assistance, business coaching, and Moises is a great example. He was a JRTI alumni of the Graphic Design Program. He went to WVU, got his graphic design degree, and then ultimately wanted to come back and work in Berkeley County and launch his own media company. But he quickly realized he just didn't have the knowledge to do that on his own, and he didn't feel comfortable approaching the SBDC that was already bogged down with six counties to serve and just didn't feel like that was the place for him. So when he found out that James Rumsey was offering this, it was a space that was already comfortable to him. And so he came back, became their first client. In one year of coaching, he's already increased his staff, saved over twenty thousand dollars in revenue, and streamlined his service offerings just through this experience that he never would have had without CTE. So that's just the power of CTE.
All right, Amber.
Yeah.
My turn.
Hi, everybody. Well, Amber and Kieran just gave you some stories that illustrate the kind of power and potential of the project that you have before you. There's a quite a path we have to, we have to take between now and those kinds of outcomes. But the good news from our perspective is the five steps that you've outlined in your RFQ are precisely the steps that we would have recommended had we, had you asked us. And and what's interesting about these steps, in addition to the fact that we think they're the right ones, is that we've been through it many times. We know that it works. We've taken clients through this process that we like to call discovery by engagement, wherein we have joyful time, getting enlightened about the project, getting excited and developing and generating momentum and enthusiasm about the project in the community. Now, these five steps, and this has been sort of suggested in the RFQ, steps one through three, or one through four, the educational master plan, the educational specification, site, master plan, and concept design are steps that we typically address simultaneously, as you, I think, have suggested in your RFQ, because they inform one another. They're malleable steps, and they're things to move back and forth. And they, of course, build to the ultimate goal, which is to, which is a schematic design. The schematic design, we like to identify that as a, in terms like this. The schematic design, we like to identify that as a, in terms like this, a consensus around a unified vision of a successful project. And I'll get a little further into that in a minute. Now, obviously, this effort is all for naught if it's not a realizable, fundable project. And so the ultimate goal for this first phase of activities that you're going to engage in is to get a bond passed, get the SBA funding and get a bond passed. So we're going to walk you through the process and the steps and how we're going to, we would engage you in that process to get to that point, but we're going to do it with the end in mind, and we're going to do it in reverse order. So starting with that notion of the bond passage, Ernie's going to tell you how we're going to get the project funded.
What you see in front of you is our history in passing bonds in the state of West Virginia. And you see that we have passed every bond, every bond that we work with with counties throughout the state. And you can see them listed there. And that's a record we're really proud of. And we feel that's because we take a different role than most other firms do. We take a really active role in helping counties pass bond. Over the last decade, we've developed a comprehensive plan that lists all the tasks that you need to complete, to pass a bond, who is assigned to completing that task, and the date. And it's been successful. You know, our comprehensive plan, we bring together board members, administrative teachers, principals, cooks. The SBA is also an integral part of that process, our design team, and the edspec process. We think the edspec process should be intertwined in there because a lot of that, you're bringing community in and getting them involved in that process. And then that allows us to put some, you know, put some, there are some renderings and some estimates that we can use to go to the public. Also part of the process of putting together school, school bond committees, bond call committees. We work with your bond and finance council. We probably have worked, I don't know who your bond council is, but we probably have worked with them on any of these projects. And then the media part. We work with you on setting up a media campaign, getting a media company onboard. And then lastly, a PAC. How do we put a PAC together and how do we defund this process of getting a bond passed? It's vital to get a bond passed because everything else we're talking about doesn't mean anything unless we pass the bond, so.
That thing, those guidelines that Ernie was talking about that he hasn't, he's been referring to it as the Bible. So it must work. It's the Bible. So schematic design, working backwards, right? I said before that schematic design basically is consensus around a unified vision of a successful project. So let's define it a little further. Consensus around a unified vision. When we get to schematic design, we will have gone through a process with you guys, where we have brought you and your stakeholders, the community, along so that there are shared priorities and goals, and we've vetted the issues and prioritized things so that we can get, so everybody has a common vision for what a successful project can be. So unified vision of a successful project. What's a successful project in schematic design? Well, schematic design is essentially a description of the scope of a project. What are the functions of the project? What kinds of spaces are needed for those functions? How big are those spaces? What kind of equipment goes in those spaces? How are those spaces organized and configured in a building? And how does the building perform? What, you know, and what layers into that are the owner's project requirements, including things like net zero. And ultimately, what's very important in that process is, are these things reconciled with the budget? So that's the essence of schematic design. But what has, I've not stated yet, is the most important and the best thing about schematic design, and it is the place in the process, you got there, thanks, Karen, where we begin to realize the building fully formed as a three-dimensional thing. The image, the character, what is the nature of the experience that people are going to have when they come to this building? Now, we're going to talk about the site in a minute, which is pretty exciting. But because of the nature of the project and the nature of the site, we've been describing this building like this, a destination for excellence in learning for Monongalia County. Is it a new image for education in Monongalia County? It can be all of those things, right? Is it a beacon of learning? Because it's up there on the hill, I can drive in on 79, there it is. Is it a prideful landmark, as Kieran said earlier? So those are all potential outcomes of an exercise like this. And this slide is to show you not solutions, but that we have the capability and the talent to deliver on the kind of image that you want. And whatever we do, it's going to be based on what you value, and we'll come to that understanding through that discovery, through engagement process that Kieran and Amber will get much deeper into later. The site, well, it's big sky country in West Virginia when you get up on that hill, right? How many of you guys have been up there and got muddy shoes, right? So we have, and it's a fabulous site. You know, I'm the design leader for this exercise. I mean, come on, let's go. It's really exciting. Now, the sites, you probably have seen plenty of diagrams in the past three sessions about the site, so you know it. The site's big, and there are constraints, but there are more opportunities than there are constraints. I mean, there's access issues, there's a way in and a way out, right? Or two ways in and out, at least right now. There are slopes that we have to stay away from. But the good news is, look at all that buildable area, that green area, that green area there is about 50 acres of buildable area. Even the worst case there, the slopes aren't so bad. So we think there are a lot more opportunities than there are constraints. Now, to just help you understand the scale of things, we've done a diagram that drops the white building there on the top, the white diagram on the top. That represents the footprint of a building of approximately the size that we could anticipate for your project, given the budget and what we know about these kinds of things, right? It might be a little inflated, so it's easier for you to see, but you can see that it doesn't take up a lot of space, right, relative to the overall site. So again, more opportunities than constraints. Now, we could put, the first inclination is put the building up on the hill, best views to and from, right? Well, it's also further from the utilities. Another option might be to put the building at the bottom of the hill. It's flatter down there, closer to the utilities. There are nine, 10, 20 places on the site where this building could go, right? We have to work with you to figure that out. We have to develop a concept to figure that out. Ultimately, though, you have this massive site, and you've suggested that you wanted to do a master plan for the site as distinct from the master plan for the educational master plan. So let's think of it as a campus plan instead, so we can distinguish the two. What are the other things that might go on this site? What are the opportunities? Well, these bubbles sort of illustrate some of them. There could be community amenities, playing fields, fitness trails. We need solar if we're going to do.
Zero.
No, zero, thank you. We may need, if the soils are appropriate, we may do geothermal, right? So we need space for that kind of thing, too. We need space for the educational programs to work outside the buildings. But there's still going to be space left over, so how do you envision going forward? Well, one of the cool things about doing a site master plan is the process envisions the future. And when you have a master plan that envisions the future, sometimes it stimulates and incentivizes and motivates activity. The best mass, action, I should say, the best master plans inspire action. Here's an example of one that we did for the Piedmont Virginia Community College. What you see there is a community college commuter campus that was designed around the principle of a vehicular boulevard. Go figure, right? So there it is, there's a vehicular boulevard. When we came in and working with the college, we recast the image of the campus into one that was designed around a pedestrian boulevard. So this kind of transformation's impactful, but it's just a drawing. But the result of this drawing is a building on the bottom right there, the white one on the bottom right. There's now discussion in the community about making it a library, that's a shared library between the community college and a public library. So that's the kind of power that this kind of project, this kind of long-term thinking could have. Now, the Renaissance Academy is going to be the anchor to this development, right? It's the important thing. So how do you, next slide? So how do you come up with the nature of that anchor? Well, it starts with concept design, and that's what Laura's going to talk about.
Thank you, Anthony. So another activity that we do during design is what we call concept design, and that's really simple in the sense that we take all of your programmatic elements, a lot of spaces there, right, and divide them into buckets so we can quickly throw them together in different configurations, and you guys can react to it. We can really start to understand just in a little clip of a moment, the spirit of the building in a really understandable way before we move in to get into the logistics. So with our experience of working at CTE, we really see four buckets for that. The first one is heavy duty. It's like if you close your eyes and you think of CTE, that's it. It's high bay, lots of equipment, lots of infrastructure that's required, you really need to know where it's going to go. Light duty, it's a little less heat on that, right? It still needs equipment, it still needs infrastructure, but it can welcome a lot of programs and really be flexible for you as programs come and programs go. The link part is incredibly important. That's that connective tissue that starts to bind those spaces. It's really where informal gathering happens, collaboration, really where student identity is formed. And also outdoor space. We know that for heavy duty and for light duty, of course, you need outdoor project space, but outdoor learning space, especially after COVID, is something we understand and really creates that learning landscape using spaces outside and inside your building to maximize your investment. So we came up with a couple of concepts, really to just kind of get your, get the gears rolling and be able to talk to you about it. The first one is what we call bridge, and that's the link in between them is really bridging light duty and heavy duty. It's where you would enter the building, maybe you have a community entrance and a student entrance, a lot of flexibility there. But the important part of this one is a really compact footprint. We have a lot of flexibility of how we start to move those things around, which could be really great when we start dealing with the topography on this site. The next one is we start to break those parts a little bit. We're starting to see light duty and heavy duty connected by this link, but the outdoor project space is starting to be shared between them, a lot of good maybe collaboration opportunities between your programs, which we know they do a fair amount of right now, but also still maintaining that Masonry Yard, that auto lab, still happening on the heavy duty side, but in a protective way. And also, most importantly, building that entry plaza, that identity of you know where you're going, you know where you're headed, and you know exactly what's happening there. The next one is hub. And that's where these, all of these programmatic elements really start to pull apart and develop their own identity. Maybe they're under one roof, maybe they're not. Maybe it is more of a campus and creating more of that collegiate feel. And just a note on that, you know, we talk about college and career readiness. Nothing is college readiness like time management, forget from one place to another. And it's just a reminder that every decision that you're going to make really needs to be made through the lens of how do you take every opportunity to make sure this building is really delivering on your vision? And there's no better place to build that vision than with a really good edspec. When we engage with clients to write edspecs, we've done a ton of edspecs, some countywide with 150 schools, some with counties that haven't built, they have one high school, they built it 60 years ago, they have no idea where to start. So what that's allowed us to do is create a really good process that we know will give you the outcomes that you need because we've done it before. We've done it a lot of time with a lot of success on a lot of different scales. What's special about your project, though, is you're not just writing an edspec, you're also writing an educational master plan. And what we know is successful about our edspec process will also really benefit the master plan, and we view if we can do those concurrently, it will only strengthen the bond between them. We're defining a really great master plan, and Renaissance is a manifestation of that plan, and that's exactly what we want. So we started by asking ourselves some questions. These are questions, I mean, there's lots of them, but from what we know of you, looking at your CEFP, kind of talking to people around the county, how are we going to improve access and equity for all Mon County students? Are we going to offer programs and services beyond Mon County? What does that unlock in terms of funding and accessibility? Also, how are we creating a learning ecosystem for Mon County, and what does that really look like? All of these questions are not specific to the building, but are also specific to your master plan, and we want to explore those at the same time to make sure we're taking every advantage. So the first thing we start with is engagement. This is a really great part of the process, if we're being honest. Everybody is welcome to the table. There's a lot of on-ramps to really participate this in the way you can. Not everybody's ready to come here and talk out loud. Sometimes you need to meaningfully write something down in a survey. Sometimes you really want to get your hands moving and be really tactile. We know learning styles are important. Your stakeholder's the exact same way. Everybody's going to engage in different ways. So we're really looking to make sure that we're defining all the parts of the project through this engagement phase. And the most important part of this is we need to make sure the tone of our engagement process is really authentic and making sure people know that when they come to the table, we want to hear your input, good or bad, because there's definitely not going to be all sunshine and rainbows. I don't want to be the one to break it to you guys. But also that that feedback is valuable and is going to be folded back into this building. We are all investment, investing in this facility. The next thing that we're going to do, once we've sort of answered those questions, now we've left the engagement period, now we're ready to focus on space. Let's put some pen on paper, let's get it done. We're going to go look at a couple of facilities in your area, also obviously going to look at higher ed facilities. We're going to go do some site visits. We've already gotten it done, this, we're way ahead of schedule. That's Dr. Campbell, Donna, Amanda, we've already done a little bit of that. But the first thing we're going to do is we're going to go to M-Tech, and y'all, I've been following M-Tech for months, and I am dying to go. Please let me go. I know that this project is, these programs are already successful. They racked up over 30 awards at Skills. That is, they're going to go compete on the national scale at the end of the year. That's incredible. But we're also going to be able to start engaging our work partners, our industry partners, to make sure that we're going and seeing professional environments and inviting them back to the table to say, how are we going to make these professional environments look and feel exactly like when they're going to go to work at the following year? We also need to be cognizant that these are also learning spaces. It's not just about professional. How are we going to make sure that we have variety of scales that really tune into student learning, indoor, outdoor? And then finally, we also need to talk about net zero. We have a lot of experience with doing net zero projects with people, with districts particularly, that have never done net zero before. Really starting from scratch is a learning, learning curve, big time. And we need to make sure that you guys are prepared and have the professional development in place to make sure that this will be successful and the building will perform the way you want, or kind of have a tiered approach of how you could be net zero-ready, maybe not net zero day one. And we have a variety of strategies to achieve that. And finally, that ends up in a really great document, a concise document that works for you. You know what you're getting, that's incredibly important. And also, more importantly, is a companion piece of the education master plan that Amber's going to talk about. All right, so I'm bringing it home. So we were, the Adventure Group was established by a classroom teacher who had 15 years in Mon County schools, and we know the importance of designing with the people that are going to actually be implementing the learning strategies. And so as part of that master plan, we're looking to engage the full ecosystem. And again, this is just a sampling of stakeholders that should be involved in this conversation, but some of those key ones, keeping in mind that our student might be the end user, but they're not necessarily the customer, especially if we need to pass bond. So we're talking about families who are often the most influence, the most influence on whether or not a student pursues CTE. We're talking about our K-12 schools and our educators to make sure they're properly prepared to go into this environment to meet the aspirational goals for learning that we have. And even things like social services, we know that in order for a student to be really focused in the classroom, they have to be fed and be addressing some of the traumas that they've been facing. So if we design programming with prevention in mind, we can save a lot of taxpayer dollars on the backend. And so what this looks like is we're creating this profile of a Ren Academy graduate and ultimately a Mon County graduate that is prepared for the current workforce, but is also creating the future workforce. And so they're creating, co-creating with these stakeholders, a knowledge and skills inventory that includes four components. At the foundation, it's very important that we instill academic learning. They have to have strong literacy and numeracy skills in order to succeed in technical environments. And we know at this level, academic resiliency is very important. So we're talking literacy, numeracy, and resiliency side by side so that they, when they enter Ren Academy, they can really take advantage of those technical skills to enter the workforce and have these desired credentials to succeed in their desired career path. Layered onto that, we also know that in order for something to be equitable, one of the biggest contributors to student success is their access to networks and social capital. And so throughout this process, we want to ensure they're receiving mentorship and they graduate with a strong network, whether they came into the program with one or not. And then finally, that term "local" is on purpose, it's not a typo. This is the idea that we are simultaneously inselling local skills, local pride, local opportunities to engage with their community, along with global skills that allow them to be competitive in a global workforce. It's no longer necessary to leave West Virginia to get work. You can bring those skills and stay and work in your local community and make West Virginia prosper. And so all of that culminates into an opening day where all those stakeholders are at the table, and they're bringing it home to just create this really revitalized approach to CTE in Mon County.
How are we doing? I think we're right on. So I know we're getting close. In short, you can see that we have a lot of ideas on Mon County. We probably have about 80 more slides that we could share with you. We really got energized by diving into this exercise in the last few weeks. We're energized about the prospect of doing that with you further and would ask for your ask for your trust and your confidence in that. We've done this before with other counties. We've worked in large school districts. We've worked in school districts with three schools before and everything in between. We love what we see here. We know you guys are trying to do this the right way, and we'd love to be a part of that with you. So we're happy to take any questions and continue the conversation.
I'm going to ask about the undermining. Every group that comes had something that's been their big selling point. You guys did not mention that at all, the fact that there's deep mines and this was a surface mine site. So what do you have to say about that?
So great question. And, you know, we've digested the report that was generated in your due diligence study as well. And I mentioned in my introduction about the project that we did up in the hills, south hills of Pittsburgh, which was very similar to your site. It was about 160 acres, right? And I can close my eyes and look at that site plan, the topography of it, very similar to yours in a lot of ways. It was also deep mined and surface mined, strip mined as well. We had two, we had intense geotechnical investigation that was done there at both levels, obviously. And that's something that your report tells you needs to happen next. So there's more investigation to be done to find out the solution. We kind of had the worst of both worlds at that project as well. We had to do ground mining in that site to handle the deep mine subsidence. And we also had to do deep dynamic compaction at the service, because just like at your site, they're not putting controlled fill back on that site when they fill that big hole. So we've been through that before. We have comfort and confidence in the ability of the local geotechnical engineering on our team and the subcontracting community in your region to be able to handle that. There's going to certainly be some prescriptive measures that are going to need to be taken. At that project, with the deep dynamic compaction, we were actually still able to do mostly typical spread footings on top of that with traditional construction. But it did take that layer of deep dynamic compaction to get there. So further investigation will be necessary, and we'll deploy our team to manage that and implement those recommendations so you have a safe building at the end of the day.
Thank you.
I'll ask the same question I asked the other two groups. What's the biggest challenge you face when you do these kind of projects? And how do you overcome them?
Boy, you know, I don't want to be cliche about it, but we see, I think, all the challenges that we see ahead of us as opportunities. You know, when Anthony talked about the site plan, we see, we see a lot of constraints on this site, but because of the acreage that you have, because of the vision that you've got, that will only help to inform our hand and inform our process to come up with the best right answer. There's going to be a lot of possibilities on that site, a lot of possibilities in your program. I think the key for us is going to be to really be clear as a collective group, our team, your team, and your constituents, with identifying those clear priorities to help with that decision-making, so that when we stand back at the end of the day, when we're all there to cut that ribbon together, that we can say, mission accomplished. We set out on these guiding principles at the beginning of the project, and we can check all those boxes in the project that we delivered. So, yeah, please.
That question is relative, right? Kiran's biggest challenge might be different than my biggest challenge. So what it made me think of is, you know, as sort of the design lead, and I'm supposed to be, the way I've been characterizing my role in this project is I'm going to be the surrogate client, right? That means we're going to work together with you closely, immersively, but most of the work we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing it without you there, right? So somebody has to be making sure that we're doing what you need, right? So I'm going to be there at the beginning, helping to facilitate those meetings, collecting the information, giving it back to you, and hearing from you that we've given, that we've said the things the way you want to say them, and we're doing things the way you want to do them, and things are looking like you want them to look, right? So in that process, the biggest challenge for me is getting that consensus. Now, the good news is, our company does nothing but public work. Well, community engagement is a routine part of our daily practice. So we've developed protocols and expert facilitation methodologies to enable us to do that. And Laura is really good at that process, and I'll be helping oversee it. So that's the challenge from my perspective of being the surrogate client during the process of discovery and defining the goals of the project. Now I'm a designer, right? Now I'm thinking budget, right? You might think designer, do you think of budget? Yeah, he is. As an example, the site, that's going to take a chunk out of the budget, right? And because that kind of intervention that Kiran talks about, that's, you know, that's not extreme, but it's something we have to deal with. So one of the things that we do in design is we make sure that we understand, early as we can, what are the things that we can't compromise on? You know, what are the things that are going to be there behind the walls, under the ground, that we just have to live with? And you put them in their box, and you see what's left over, and now it's a matter of putting your money in the right places. And so it's a question of having the judgment and the talent and experience to know how to get the most for the money. But probably more importantly, it's those priorities that are set at the beginning of the project that Kiran referenced, so that when we make those decisions and we're editing, and editing is always going to happen, right, that we've done it by having turned over every stone, prioritized them, so that when we do make those decisions, you're involved in it, and ultimately, those decisions are based on what you value most. So it's a long-winded, and I gave you three answers to one question, but there it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys had in your proposal, you have two different buildings, and I did math on the buildings. One of them was $600 a square foot, the other one was 234. Can you explain the difference?
Do you mind referencing which ones you're, yeah, just want to make sure we have our...
I mean, I did the George Washington Carver Technology New Construction.
Okay.
234,000 square foot and 56 million. And you did 175 million at the Center for Applied Technology, the cost of 105 million. Two-thirds the size, twice the price. What's the difference?
So, great question. I think that the values were taken a little bit differently for those two particular projects in terms of what was baked into that number. Cat North, the one that you referenced, Center for Applied Technology, that number actually has some soft costs and FFME and equipment baked into it. It's also scheduled to open about 12 years plus or minus after that. Other ones, so you are going to see some inflation and escalation in the difference in those values, too. They are closer together than that. Right now, we're seeing about $500 plus or minus a foot in current bids that we're getting for public K-12 projects in our region, a little bit closer to central Maryland. You know, we've been talking to Ernie and our local partners about it. You guys are a little closer to 425, 450 a foot right now. Building of this magnitude with, you know, there is going to be, as Anthony mentioned, some more expensive site work here. There's going to be bringing utilities and other infrastructure to the site, and possibly some work on the mines to subside things happening underground. So the site cost won't be lower here. So I think we're, you know, we're going to have to spend money in the right places and be smart about it. And when we talk about goal setting, I want to, I was thinking about net zero a little bit when Anthony was giving his last response. You know, Paul and I were talking about this earlier, just that we want to make sure that we dispel the myth that net zero is something that, if we're over budget or approaching our budget, net zero is something we can't afford. We want to make sure that drastically reducing your energy stays in the conversation, regardless of whether we put photovoltaics in the roof, regardless of whether we're able to do geothermal or not. We want to make sure that we're keeping your energy bills low. We want to make sure that that building envelope is tight, so you're not, you know, that your warm air, that you're paying a lot of money to heat, isn't leaching out through the building, that's staying where you want it. We want to make sure that indoor air quality is great for these kids that are going to be in the building for many hours a day and the staff that support them. So we want to make sure that that, we're taking a holistic approach and spending money in the right places, that we're looking at lifecycle costs, not just first costs to keep those bid numbers low, that we can have those conversations together to make sure that we're looking at the big picture when we make those decisions.
Anybody else? Thank you guys for coming in and sharing with us. We really appreciate it. And you have anything else you want to say, or is there something that just one of you guys plopped into your mind? You've got about two minutes, if you...
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What are some of your aspirations? Like, what do you, the building's open, five years from now, the building's open. It's a tremendous success. One or two of you tell me, just what makes it so?
What makes it a success is when we fundamentally change the idea of CTE. And everyone don't think of it as there's a carpenter and a plumber and someone, I mean, those things are very important. But we want to try to get kids that are career-ready for any career. Because, I mean, as we're, and that's serving, you know, we have mountaintop beverage starting over in West Virginia. There's a lot of businesses going into it, or Mylan has vacated. There's also Mylan's still out on Collins Ferry Road. The hospital systems are begging for employees. We need to have a school system, a successful school system will be this facility to answer the needs of the community, exactly as we're getting beat on all the time about providing people. So that would be the success, is if we can serve the need.
Great. That's it?
Oh, all right.
Are there other visions of success?
As far as this area, I would like to see us, as our top employers, insurance companies are paying a tab, our taxes are paying a tab, being healthcare, so I'd love to see us get to the point where we're actually making widgets and we're providing the people to make those widgets. Because I'm just, it's an economy which healthcare has always booked. But I have always felt like we're on weak shifting sand when you have...
We're not making widgets.
We're not making widgets, because we have to create something.
And we want to keep our kids here.
Yeah, I've grown up in Pittsburgh. I understand that argument.
Well, we want to answer the needs of the community and the state. There's no reason that we shouldn't be leading the way with doing something different. And this would be grossly different than what most areas of the state have been able to afford in this kind of preparation. And as, you know, everyone else is referring to, this does not preclude anyone from going on and getting a different kind of degree or a different kind of future, or creating a new pathway for things that we can't even imagine.
So my next question was going to probably be something that's going to take another 15 minutes to answer.
So I was going to say, you don't get that opportunity.
But, you know, it was going to be, what are the obstacles to that kind of thing? And maybe is there something in the state, which is one of the reasons we brought adventure on. But this is just to illustrate the kind of dialogue we need to have going forward.
Thank you guys very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thoughts of movement, I'm not good at.
You guys have the guidance of about 40 minutes, and we've been looking for about 10 minutes at the end for questions, if that's a possibility. So, all right, appreciate it.
Ready for us to get started?
Yep, thank you.
Well, good news. We are the last team that you're going to carry. I'm sure you guys are ready to call it a day. I'm sure it's been a long day. First of all, thank you for providing our team the opportunity to come and present our qualifications and to discuss the future of career technical and college preparatory education in Mon Gay County. We realize you've spent a lot of time thinking about this project, doing some preliminary planning for this project, and we certainly hope that by the end of the presentation, we've given you some new ideas and some information to consider as you move forward. So my name is Adam Crayson. I'm an architect and a principal at ZMM Architects and Engineers. And in an effort to keep the time short, we're going to let the rest of the team, you'll meet the rest of the team as we go through the presentation this evening. But we'd like to kick it off with a little, taking a little bit of time to hear more about your vision for the project. So I'm going to hand it over to Allegra Enix to lead us through that process.
Well, we're going to jump in, and we just want to hear from you. We're jumping into the future. It's a few years out. We've successfully opened the Renaissance Academy, and we want to hear what that looks like from you guys. How do you envision that in a few words?
Community serving. That's two words.
Inspirational and all inspiring.
Innovative, something different than going beyond what we already do in education, taking that next step.
If your children or grandchildren are fortunate to attend, what's one sentence that you would want them to come away with if they're attending this school?
Critical thinking.
Prepared for whatever they want to do next.
Thanks, Lyra. Thank you. We've had a really interesting time over the last several weeks, and certainly the last few days, we've been preparing this presentation, having similar conversations. And it sounds like our vision for what this facility might be very much aligned with what you were, what you were speaking to. So we're going to focus this presentation on your project, just a little bit about our team. We've assembled a team of local, regional, national experts who work on these types of projects every day. The other thing that's great about our team, good news again, is that we've worked together. We haven't assembled this team just specifically for this project. Our team has worked together to deliver some innovative projects in West Virginia. We worked together on one of the first net zero schools in the state in Raleigh County, Ridgeview Elementary School. And very recently, ZMM and Cannon Design have been working closely with the state of West Virginia on a co-located laboratory project that's going to combine all of the state labs into one facility. So we are a team, you're not going to be a guinea pig for us. We're a tested team that has delivered results in the state of West Virginia in the past. We also, we joked earlier when we looked at this slide, we have you surrounded. Each part of our team has resources in the region that are going to be able to respond to this project and provide the solutions that you need to move the project forward. Another thing that's important is the connection to the community. ZMM has a philanthropic statement that we are committed to supporting organizations that enhance the educational cultural landscape in West Virginia and the communities we serve. And we're very committed to that. So we participate in a lot of organizations that we think ultimately, you know, might be a stakeholder, want to provide some input into this kind of groundbreaking or transformational project that you're undertaking. And one thing that we're very proud of is Cannon on a national level, CMTA on a national level, and certainly ZMM locally. We're the team that West Virginia school systems come to when they're looking to take on a transformational project. And we just wanted to highlight a couple very quickly. Lincoln County, when they were under state control, and they wanted to design the first comprehensive high school in the state that had a community and technical college branch, a health facility, all under one roof with their high school, came to ZMM. In Campbell County, we've helped them with a variety of projects, one that's underway now where we're helping them to convert the Sears store at the Barbersville Mall into a new career and technical center. In Nicholas County, where they've undertaken an approach where they're looking at an academy approach to their community and technical education, and really to wrap all of the traditional education into those community and technical college pods. And finally, in Kanawha County, where we've helped them with multiple projects, this is Edgewood Elementary School. It started out, it was funded by the School Building Authorities, a school of the future, which is a name that I never really embraced, because I think it was a school that was utilizing maximum technology and different curriculum delivery methods to reach the elementary school students, so more hands-on learning. It also celebrated sustainability. The sign that you see on the bottom was used, the students there, it's a one-to-one school, and they can take their iPad up to that. We didn't want to fill it with a bunch of signage about what their school was, but we helped them create a webpage for 10 different systems within the school that the students could go up and learn. We populated them originally, and then the students learned about their school, and they would get tours of the school to celebrate the sustained, different sustainable elements of the facility. Finally, one thing that we think is important is we're also working with the places your students are going to go. That would be the higher education institutions and the workplaces where your students are going to ultimately end up.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having us in front of you today. I want to applaud you for including in the scope of work a very intentional front-end step to do an educational master plan, which is what I and my team do nationwide. We do nothing but district plans, educational plans and curriculum-type planning with school districts around the country. In our prereq prep for random services, we're proud that we have achieved over $10 billion of capital, popularly elected capital investments in our communities that we've worked in. And a quick shout-out, a subliminal one here, but hats off to the Mohicans and just dominating in the sports as part of it. But what we're doing is designing a system, right? We're not just designing a building. This is a very exciting building, and the program that's going to occupy it really stands to be revolutionary within your communities, but really a hallmark for the entire state and region, and something to be proud of. And we are humbly, with a grave sense of responsibility, in front of you to share some of our ideas about it. But it's really about designing a system for all of your high school students. And it's not just about, you know, the in-town. It's not just about Morgantown University, but it's also about the students at Clay Batell, and designing a system for, that reaches down to the middle schools and creates vertically-aligned programs and pathways for their achievement into college and on into careers as well. So I imagine some of the other teams wisely have put forward that, yeah, there's a bunch of different pathways that are studied. And we've looked at the ones that are already existing at M-Tech today. And it's an amazing program there. And, you know, what we're talking about here is putting that on superchargers and really doing something amazing for the future. We looked around at the local employers and stuff, which is really, you know, informs the sorts of programs that we might want to make investments in. But we'd like to say, we take it a step further. I'm very much a data sort of guy. And if there's folks here that like doing math and looking at data and doing dashboards and that kind of thing, we're going to have a lot of fun together, because that's exactly what we do. lot of fun together, because that's exactly what we do. In doing research and development with a technology called Thrively, a group out of California that measures students' aptitudes and interests. It looks at the Covey system and all these different metrics and things, and comes up with a way for teachers to have transparency into the strengths of their students. And what we've done is, looking at a school district in Southern California, not just taking a measure of what the demand, which will be the Y-axis here for the career paths is, but also the interests of the students, and then the heat map from cold to warm there of the relative strengths of students. By using this kind of data, you can unpack some opportunities that are there. So if you look at this as a quadrant here of interest versus demand, we have this area here where there's a lot of, of market demand for high-paying jobs in an area up in that upper-left, and it's an area where there's a lot of strengths with the student population, but it's of low interest. That's an opportunity. By looking and unearthing these sorts of things, we can design a program that's relevant to these students and finds a way to bring them towards that kind of pathway. That's the sort of research and development that we uniquely bring to this sort of project. Baltimore County is a recent project where we did a district-wide master plan. We looked at all of the career tech opportunities within the area and all the different pathways. We created dashboards so you could visualize all of their high schools within the county and see the sorts of courses that are there. As part of the process, we identified, now, it might be a similar case here, you know, the, the programs go where those unicorns exist. By that, I mean your teachers, that are willing to forego probably more money in the workplace to come and give back to the community and, and teach, and that's a real barrier towards these sorts of programs. Well, in Baltimore County, a large 170 school district, they had all these different programs that grew up, and as you can see here, the health and science is just coincidentally all aligned on the western edge of the county, which really was a barrier and inequitable situation that we were able to disrupt by shining a light on it and looking at it in a visual way. So we're talking about designing a system, right? Not just a building, this Renaissance Academy can manifest itself in various ways. One might be that it's a standalone magnet school, where students can opt into it, they are officially enrolled at the school, they get all their graduation requirements there, they perhaps do sports, or do band, or do all the sorts of arts and other things, and actually graduate from that school. That's one model that could be. And the way we've illustrated it here with the different colors for pathways, there, maybe there's a CTE light option at the, at the other high schools, but we have this one Center of Excellence. Alternatively, it could be set up as a shared passport facility, just like you're doing at M-Tech right now, where students can spend part of their day in the facility, which has, you know, the issues of transportation and logistics around sustaining that kind of program. Or maybe it's some sort of hybrid of these, but there's a lot of conversations we need to have to be able to design this, engaging with all your instructors, with your community members, and with the businesses that are surrounding your communities to see where this might want to be. We know there's a lot of heritage around sports, and to disrupt that with a magnet school could be a barrier for folks that otherwise would be super interested in being part of an exciting new program, but they want to be in the band, or they want to be involved in athletics. So maybe there's some hybrid sorts of approaches towards that. We also want to touch on very critical programs, vital programs in your system, such as special education services that are rendered, and CTE is not just for everyone else, it's for everybody, right? And we want to make sure that those pathways are inclusive as part of it, and we also want to have conversations around how you're going to operationalize this. Maybe there's policies around certifications and things, that can be a barrier in some jurisdictions, it's a common problem, or can't find the instructors that are necessary to drive a meaningful CTE program, because like I said, they can make three, four times the amount of money out in the private sector, and it's just such a barrier. And if we create a wall for even those that would love to be there, but they don't have the certifications, if there's a methodology or maybe some allowances in policy that can be derived, we want to have these conversations with you. So all of this to say, we've done our homework. We know that some folks have had a little bit of a jumpstart on this, but we've worked our butts off to make sure we're catching up and we're up to your speed. We're ready to go from day one. Here's a benchmark that we've done of all the high school growth that's happened throughout your region here. And proud to say that your two comprehensive high schools here in town are, lead the way in terms of growth throughout your communities. And we do know that we sit within the context of a new private school that's going to be opening, within the context of a new charter school, and perhaps more that could follow forward. This is an arms race for students, which is an amazing thing for families and students, but I know that you as a district really want to seize the opportunity and create transformational outcomes for students like this school will deliver.
I'm going to pass it along. I don't need that. Okay, just have the one slide. Good evening, I'm Greg Fox with Terradon. And as you see on the slide, it started stating that you've identified and purchased the property, and we understand it does have a history of mining activity. The good news is, I've worked on, I believe, over 14 of your schools countywide over the last 20 years. Some of them's had some mining history, university, high school, we worked on that with Southern Mine, we mitigated that. The site more similar to this was probably Myland Elementary School out of Myland Park. It had about 70 feet of mine spoil, and we went through that mitigation process well. We also recently did the track for WVU, that was on about 90 feet of mine spoil, and it's, it turned out to be a great facility. And we have another project that's under construction off the baseball exit, that's on about 65 feet of mine spoil, and that's the new 350,000 square foot distribution center that's going to support the view hospitals. So I think that with the experience that we've had with these type sites, then I think we can come up with a creative, economic, safe solution to make your project a success on this property. Thank you.
Well, hello, Michael Kama with Cannon Design, Senior Designer. And picking up where Greg is talking about the site, that's one of the first things, of course, we look at as designers, but of course, we're doing our homework, as Paul said, and we're digging in. For us, this is where design starts. This is about the students and the community and the culture that will be at this school, learning about how Morgantown is embedded in the hills and the nature, really great places to go that really define this community, how it's been forged over time by geology and geography, what creates and makes this place special. And then, of course, the history of it and how that has gone through economies and changes over time. Yesterday and today, we, you know, through the different mining operations that started here before it really became to flourish. And all that to say, that we're also looking at the ecosystem that will develop around this school, all the different factors. Now, I'm not going, we're not going to go through this whole chart, this is just us mind mapping, everything we think will be part of the design decisions that will go into this facility, from trauma-informed design, neurodiversity of spaces, the different pathways and sectors, the teams that are going to bring it together, getting to net zero and carbon-neutral ideas also, just putting all that out there. But we're already cooking, we're incredibly excited and thinking about these ideas. So what will frame that is absolutely the skills the students will need to get there, the types of experiences the students will have in their career here, enhancing those experiences, and what kind of environments and spaces also support those skills and A recent project we're doing with St. Xavier in the Cincinnati area pulled the entire student body, and we're learning that as generations develop, what they're really focused on is hands-on learning over other modes. They're focused on social learning over solitary learning. This is the change, the shift over time, the way we kind of all grew up learning a complete, almost completely different pedagogy, but we have to adapt and, and so the kids, the students get the skills they need. We also know what we don't know, especially the way technology moves, you know, 15 years, sorry, 15 jobs that didn't exist 10 years ago, we, we see these kinds of articles all the time. How will a career-focused college pep facility develop over the next 50 years? What kinds of spaces will be in here to support the careers that will be in this community? And you can see a few examples here, this is the Waki Aspiring Professional Experience High School, or Apex as it's known, that we worked with in Iowa. It's a combination of soft skills and hard skill spaces, and you can see here in the middle, this kind of interior courtyard area, all about mingling, hoteling, coworking, and then lab module team spaces on the outside, mimicking real-world experiences and opportunities. Here you can see the students diving in into all kinds of amazing activities in that space, supporting their pathways and careers. We're proud to even say, Tim Cook, Apple CEO, finding one of the new models for future learning, and the kinds of careers that we'll see and need. But don't take it from him or us, take it from the students currently writing, blogging, their experiences for everyone to see, talking about the types of experiences they get, how they meet with the community, the different industry partners, and the, the joy it's bringing them, which is really amazing. Kirkland Ranch Academy of Innovation is a school we just finished in Florida, CTE with a core curriculum school also, leading to either certification or higher education. And the students there are experiencing all kinds of diverse spaces and pathways, programs that are related to the industry there. Similarly to Waki, the students there are sharing their stories virally through Instagram so they can get, show off and share all of their experiences, working with robotics and nursing or new 3D printing machines, and engaging career partners, and learning soft skills also through workshops. So what kind of spaces make these experiences and skills thrive? It's those chance incidents, coworking spaces, other spaces to go to, places to meet and engage with community partners, and then, of course, each other within the student body. This school has two major areas, we'll focus on the hub here for college and industry engagement. It's shaped like a real, real offices, there's boardrooms and huddle rooms and places to meet and gather in larger groups. Similarly, on a smaller scale, in the core curriculum, there's collab hubs, which also function similarly, but on a smaller scale allow academies within the different core And then CTE labs also, of course, a diversity of spaces, small, medium, large, high bays, all to support all the different types of career pathways and technology needs.
So you can tell from the designs, these are special kind of places, and they sound similar to what you aspire to, to create here in Monongalia. And one thing I'd like to share with you, we're very actively involved in research and development. You saw the data stuff we like to do and the depth of analysis that we bring to the table. We published a book called The Third Teacher, that has 87 different provocative ideas about designs of schools that we use as kind of inspiration and our clients like to use. One thing I'm going to signal out as well, we do a lot of healthcare design, and we have experts in pediatric, mental, and behavioral health that design nothing but clinical facilities that I work with and have access to all the time. And we created a research project called Whole Child, Every Child, which speaks to serving all the needs and wellness of all the human beings that we're serving, as well as everyone. So it has, speaks to the inclusivity and equity aspects, as well as driving at the wellness aspects of the work. Universal Design for Learning is a precept, we're actively involved with CAST and research and development there, and apply their aspects to make sure that we have inclusive environments without barriers and accommodates students that are on the autism spectrum, as well as Trauma-Informed Design Society, where we've done research and development with them to create tools to assess facilities in a way that we know that we're not creating moments of, of fight-and-flight type responses unwittingly as part of our designs.
Briefly, we, we feel important to touch on safety, of course, with everything in the news. This is a school, but this is also home to a lot of students, staff, faculty that are working here every day, and we would never want them to feel like they have to worry, that they can thrive every day. So we work from the beginnings of design, this is day one, what kind of massings and how do we, you know, create a culture and a community and accountability and make sure our students are safe. We're thinking about it here, and it becomes an approach that we work with local law enforcement and everybody to refine for every school, but this specific example will show you, shows site, a layered approach of site-building, commons, and classrooms inward, starts from the outside in. How do you control points inward? How do you control the main entry? How do you have students come and go? What kind of policies are there? Is it a single point of entry to control everybody? How do you watch it and make it yet still open and connected at the same time? And we don't want to condemn our students to spaces where they feel like they have to constantly think about themselves. So we take that into consideration. Of course, there's always still areas of refuge, there's always ways out, and we work with the districts and the law enforcement on those procedures, make sure that the building's operating for everybody. Similarly, you know, spaces on the second floor, for instance, there's also ways to accommodate that within the actual classrooms. You would never know that that yellow zone was for that, but that is kind of what that's built into there for, so get out of view, but to keep those commons connected throughout, and always keep safety there, but also make sure our students can continually thrive in these environments also.
So I'm going to apologize right now, I'm, I'm dealing with some sinus, so you're getting my at-nice-night voice, so it is what it is, I'm sorry. So when we talk about sustainability, a lot of what you hear from us, you're going to hear EUI, and what does that mean? All EUI is, is basically MPG of the building. Just like in golf, the lower the score, the better, the, the better it is for you. And so we, what we do is we track every building that we've, we've done in the past. So we have 20, 20 years of data plus of all of our schools and where they perform from an EUI perspective. And, and what that means is, basically with this team, everyone's can tout net zero, or say they can tout net zero. Our competition, the schools that they have, we were actually the ones that did the design on that. The reality of net zero is, it's hard to do. Everyone's using the same equipment, and I liken this to like a NASCAR team, everyone's using the same car. It's the team members that you have, it's your pit crew, it's your crew chief, it's how you're tuning that car is how you get to net zero. It's very difficult to do, especially in a CTE school. We've done CTE schools that are net zero, that are geothermal, we've done some that are not geothermal. But it all comes down to that data and where that energy goes. And that's where that, this really, the team that you choose is going to make or break this project from a net zero and a carbon-zero standpoint. We know that HVAC is a big contributor. We know that outside air is a big contributor of that HVAC. We know kitchens are a big contributor. So what can we do to reduce our kitchen load? When we talk about outside air, we also, we want to bring in as much outside air as possible to keep our indoor air quality up, but that, that costs about $5 of CFM per year to treat, it's expensive air to treat. So how do we do that in an innovative way to keep your indoor air quality high while not breaking the bank and killing our EUI? We use technologies like this, and they actually did a case study on one of the schools that CMTA did. This is called adsorbent cartridge, and what this does is it basically scrubs the air, allows us to reduce our outside air by about 60% in the building while maintaining better indoor air quality than outside. We have this documented, we use these on our net zero schools, we have better indoor air quality than the outside air. This is a big driver of what we do. It's not all that we do from a net zero perspective, but using those innovative technologies and highlighting that for students is a big part of what makes this important. It's very well documented through Harvard Research and a lot of other case studies that CO2 concentrations throughout the day lead to poor test performance. What that adsorbent cartridge that I just showed you does is actually scrub CO2 and VOCs out of the space. And so it has a dramatic impact on how these students learn, their concentration levels, and just the general health of the building. Daylighting is also a huge contributor of this. Circadian rhythm has a lot to do with mood disorders, how people sleep, how they eat. There's just so much information and studies coming out on this every day, that circadian rhythm is such a big driver of just mental health and just overall health. Glare control is a big one that we look at, orienting the building so that we don't have excessive glare in classrooms to where you can't look or see the board that you're, you're trying to learn from. And then views to the outside, there's, there's been plenty of studies that show that views to the outside lead to higher cognitive function and just overall attention span. Now, you might have some kids that daydream about squirrels outside, but as a whole, it's better for their learning environment.
Well, I've got some more good news. High-performance buildings generally, generally pay for themselves by cost shifting instead of cost adding. As your building performance increases, your HVAC loads, which is your biggest energy user, reduces significantly, and when it reduces significantly, so does the electrical service. High-efficiency lighting, more efficient, more lumens per watt, it's going to bring down that electrical service, we're going to be able to use fewer light fixtures. Generally, we use about 35% fewer light fixtures in our high-performance-- Generally, we use about 35% fewer light fixtures in our high-performance building, which is a big cost number. More good news. In 2022, federal government revamped their incentive for energy-efficient systems within the built environment called the Inflation Reduction Act. In previous years, this act was just for for-profit organizations. One of the changes they made this time is non-for-profit organizations, entities K-12 can take advantage of this, and it's a direct payment that comes to the school system. It doesn't come upfront, it comes after the bill's operating, the building's operating, but you can, you start at a 30% baseline credit on geothermal, solar PV, and some other systems shown there. You can also increase it to 10% by, if you're in an energy community, if you're in a mining community per se, and also if you elect to buy domestically, 40% of all your equipment bought domestically, and 100% of the steel gives you another 10%. So you, right there, you're looking at 50% direct pay back to the school system on your GO and your PV. This is a quick case study we did on a smaller school, basically saying, hey, if you've got a more conventional system, rooftop units and reheat, it may come in at about 2.1 million, and if the geothermal costs maybe 3 million, on this specific example, they're saving 30% as a delta of 900,000, essentially making the costs of the systems identical. On your school that we were looking, we did some cost data comparisons, and we think if your mechanical's in 8 to 10 million for this new school, you're likely to get 2.5 to 3.5, maybe $4 million back in your pocket after the project's up and operable. Likewise, and where you save a lot more money is in your life cycle cost, because you have built a high-performance, energy-efficient building, you're likely to save in the 5 to $6 million over a 25-year life cycle on a building of this size with a low EUI.
We're going to talk about schedule for a minute. We briefly put a tentative schedule together to give us some idea about some timelines and milestones. The first thing is the key to success here is to hit your county, state, and federal funding deadlines. We'd want to involve the school building authority as quick as possible to make sure they are, they buy into this project, they buy into it, and they're with us the whole way, all through the planning process. We know we have an aggressive schedule, but we think we have the team to meet that schedule and meet your bond referendum date to go to bond election. Next thing is, we need to initiate design development immediately after the bond election. Once you pass your bond to make the end date palatable, we need to get that started as far as design and construction documents to go to bid. And we would probably recommend a separate site development package to get that started right after design development, so by the time you get the building documents ready, we're ready to hit the construction schedule. And last but not least, we want to include all of the community and business stakeholders throughout the whole entire process, so everyone knows what's going on, we get their input throughout the whole project.
This is the last slide. I know we've kind of reached the end of our time to present here.
Good news.
Good news, that's right. Last slide of your last presentation for the evening. You know, we had a lot to discuss today. I'm sure you saw that as we tried to move through all this information, as we've had discussions about the project and tried to envision what this ultimately looks like, as you told us at the beginning of the presentation. We wanted to make sure that we demonstrated that we have the team that's most capable delivering that vision. So thank you again for the opportunity to present today, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have of us.
Michael?
Hello.
Go back to Dan. Promise this is the last time I'll ask this question. I've asked the other groups that have come in this question. What's the biggest challenge you face when you do projects like this, and how do you consistently overcome them?
That's a great question, and I think the challenges certainly vary by project. I'll say, one of the things we discussed earlier on was that we've worked on a lot of transformational projects, and I think one of the challenges is ultimately making sure that you have all the right stakeholders at the table from the beginning that are going to have impact on this. This project's going to take years to implement, right, when you include the construction, the design, the financing, everything. But there's a limited window of time we have between now, and if you're looking at running this bond next May, that means by February, you've really got to have this planned out, you've got to have the budgets established. So we need to identify very early on who all these stakeholders are and make sure we're getting that input from the beginning. Paul, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Sure. Thanks for the question, Board Member Barry. I think one of the temptations is when we're doing this, the level of engagement that we propose doing on this, that there's so much engagement to the point where we almost want to have very bespoke, specific design responses to some of the challenges that are out there. And we want to resist that and have flexibility by design built into the outcomes. By that, I mean having plenty of high-bay spaces, having utilities that you can pull down from above, so that as the career programs come and go, that there's opportunities to quickly, without having to make bunch of remodels to it, to change and get it updated to your new standards.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Still thinking. See what Jen wants to ask, or you want to. I'm trying to decide. How costly is the mitigation process for curing an undermined? And would that take away from the cost of the project, to what extent?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, because we work primarily in the state of West Virginia, we have worked on a variety of sites like this, and certainly Teradon, who's going to be leading our site planning effort, has done so in this area. There will be an expense related to it, but there aren't many available flat usable sites in West Virginia. You've got to either, you know, it's really a trade-off. You're either going to be dealing with reclamation of that mine site, or the opposite side is you're going to be creating a flat site from a mound somewhere. So those are kind of the challenges, and it's something we've done regularly. You want to talk a little bit about?
We just have to vet that out during the due diligence. Different sites, based on the amount of overburden, the length that the overburden's been in place, you do different approaches. It could be a hybrid, could be some overexcavation, dynamic compaction, some different things we can do. And that's where a good due diligence to look at the site in its entirety, to find the best economical and creative way to lay the building out, to help mitigate those costs.
And we don't think there's anything unreasonable about this site. You know, as we've discussed it over the last several days, you know, we say, well, it's not as challenging as this site, or wasn't as challenging as Hoover, or wasn't as challenging as Edgewood. You know, this is something we encounter regularly. So we talked about costs. I mean, the site development costs could be, you know, depending on how ultimately it's attacked, you know, 10, 15, 20 million dollars of site development, when you talk access to utilities and the site improvements. But again, for a campus of the size that you're looking at here, that's not an unreasonable expense.
So as we move forward, how are you going to be able to help us marry all these funding sources together? And how much experience do you feel you have in that?
Thank you. That's a great question, too. Cannon's worked on more than, well, billions of dollars of bond issues across the country, but in the state of West Virginia, we've worked with multiple counties. We've helped Wood County, Greenbrier County, Wayne County with two, Cabo County with three. We just helped Jefferson County pass a bond issue. So we're very familiar with that process and the process that you go through to meet the deadlines to get this on a bond issue. We know that you've talked about pursuing SBA funding, and the solicitation document talked about getting approval of the plan once you get this master plan in place, and we're going to suggest bring them in earlier, day one, get them to the table. You want their buy-in if you want to help ensure that they make commit funding to the project. So that's one thing we would suggest. Now, the new funding for the IRA, I'll add.
I'll speak a little bit to the IRA, and it is new, right? It came out last year, but since its inception, our firm has been on it. We have been teaming up with a national accounting firm that's been tracking this for the last seven months, and we're committed to our clients that when we come to this new funding mechanism, that we're going to have our CPAs and advisory committees work with your CPAs to make sure that this is as smooth a process as it possibly can be. You know, data is dropping every day, things are, you know, the feds get, you know, making decisions, the IRS is making decisions, but I'll tell you what, you know, high-performance, zero energy is our bread and butter. We're probably designing more K-12 zero energy schools than anyone in the nation. So it basically is a mechanism to bring this high-efficiency schools to the nation where they could no, they couldn't otherwise afford it, right? So you want to have those $6 million in savings to put towards your staff and towards your programs. You don't want to throw it to, no offense, Mon Power, if anybody works for them, but you don't want to give it to Mon Power, right? You want to keep it in your school. And so we are on it, we are, oh my gosh, we have a teams meeting that probably has 150 of our staff on it that meet regularly and talk about it, and we have flow charts and working sites on it. So it is, it is, it is right up there with our prime objective at this time, so.
And almost every one of those county school systems that I mentioned we worked with, they either had SBA funding involved with their issue, or SBA funding was kind of an adjacent project that was going side by side with that bond issue. So it's, we have certainly regular working relationship with them and the State Department of Education. You know, ZMM is a firm that's built around designing school facilities in West Virginia. This is what we do.
Because we can't ask people to vote for it as board members in the state of West Virginia. So we're all juxtapositions.
Right.
You had ag sciences in your proposal, and I put a note on it, and I wanted to hear a little bit about it.
Yeah, it's interesting. ZMM and Cannon Design in 2016 were hired by the State Department of Agriculture to look at developing a new laboratory facility for them at their Guthrie campus. And then about, or 2022, June of 2022, our team was hired to look at the co-located lab facility, which includes the Department of Agriculture. So we have designed agricultural facilities as part of school facilities. At Lincoln County High School, had an aquaculture program. We've done meat processing facilities inside school districts, but we've also worked with them all the way to the level of the agricultural labs that are implemented across the state. Did you want to add anything about agricultural component, Paul, or Dave? Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I hope that there's one thing you've seen during the presentation tonight, is this is, this is a challenging project. It's a complicated project, but it has a tremendous opportunity to move the educational needle in the state of West Virginia. That's important to us, and we would love the opportunity to be part of that process and to help you bring this vision that you've established to reality.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And the good news is you're done, right?
Never. We are never done.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You too.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks for having me.
Oh, comes up. Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many hands have you shaken?
Well, Board Members, the one good thing to come out of tonight, it's not an easy decision. I can tell you guys, it's, I mean, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to go through this process as far as getting to that point. I don't know, since we're going to potentially talk about a contract, I think we could.
Do executive session for a little bit to clean up conversation.
So are you making a motion?
I don't, I can't make a motion for executive session.
Michael. You're talking about tonight?
Right now.
You want to pick one tonight, Jimmy?
No. I just want to get, I just want to be able to talk about contracts in executive session, and I'll make the motion when we go into executive session to talk about contracts. I may need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?